One and welcome to the June 4th, 2024, meeting of the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors. I'd like to ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Supervisor Koenig.
Here.
Supervisor Friend.
Here.
Supervisor Hernandez.
Present.
Supervisor McPherson and Supervisor Cummings.
Here. Before we begin, I need to announce that Supervisor Hernandez is appearing remotely because he's out of the state on government business related to the Regional Transportation Commission. Supervisor Hernandez, I need to confirm with you that no other individuals over the age of 18 are present in the room with you, or if there are, state your relationship with those individuals.
Uh, no, no one's here. That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. With that, I'll move on to moment of silence and see if there's any board member who would like to dedicate today's moment of silence. Saying none, we will just take a brief moment of silence. Y'all join me with the, for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America.
America. The Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I'd like to make a line acknowledgement. Yeah, this unceded territory of the Owasso-speaking UP tribe, the Ammawitson tribal band comprised of the descendants of indigenous people taking to mission Santa Cruz and San Juan Batista during Spanish colonization of the central coast, is today working hard to restore traditional stewardship practices on these lands and heal from historic trauma. Next item on our agenda is considerations of late additions to the agenda, additions and deletions to consent and regular agendas. I'll turn it over to our CAO, Carlos Palacios.
Um, yes, Chair Cummings and members of the board, there are a number of corrections to today's agenda. On the regular agenda, item number seven, there's additional materials. Revised Attachment B, packet pages 25 through 33. Revised Attachment C, packet page 34. On item number eight on the regular agenda, there's additional materials. The revised attachment A, pages 37 and 38. Revised Attachment B, pages 39 through 46. Revised Attachment C, page 47. On item nine, there's additional materials. Revised Attachment A, pages 50 and 51. Revised Attachment B, pages 52 through 59. And revised attachment C, uh, that's page 60. On the consent agenda, there's one correction. There's additional materials. There's a revised memo, packet page 919, which is replaced. The recommended actions should read, quote, approve amendment number one to independent contractor agreements, uh, numbers 24C4829, CSG Consultants, 24C4828, Forleaf, and 24C4827 with Bureau Rites, North American Incorporated. To extend the terms through June 30th, 2025, to increase compensation in the amount of $150,000 for a new, not to exceed amount of $200,000 for each provision of building permit plan check unauthorized to community development and infrastructure director to, or designate to sign. Uh, that completes the corrections to today's agenda.
All right, thank you very much. Are there any board members that would like to remove an item from consent to the regular agenda?
Chair, I'd suggest remove, uh, item 28, accepting Falstaff's report on cannabis community meetings.
Are there any other board members that would like to remove an item from consent?
No, but also when they moved 28, so.
Okay. So we'll move item number 28 to consent. And with that, I will open up public comment. So this is an opportunity for any member of the public to address the board on items that are on our consent agenda, uh, that are on our regular agenda, but noting that you will not be able to speak to that item when it's heard and to any item that is not on our agenda. And so we'll go ahead and start with our first speaker here in public. Good morning.
Thank you. Good morning, board members and staff. My name is Rachel Dan. I am the Government Relations Director for Zem Supervirance Fund, and I'm joined here this morning with Eric Lombardo, the Policy Manager for the Land Trust of Santa Cruz County, and Grace Stetson, the Campaign Coordinator for the Water and Wildfire Protection Act. And we're here to support item 39, the county support for the Water and Wildfire Protection Act. And I just want to thank each one of you individually for your early endorsement of this measure, um, that was critical. And you, like our organizations, share the knowledge that this can be a transformational measure for this county in bringing in annual revenue so that our county can meet the challenge of climate change going into the future. So on behalf of our organizations, countless community members in the county and elected officials such as yourselves, thank you very much for the action that you're taking today on your agenda. Uh, we are available for questions anytime, and we look forward to the campaign this summer and fall. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Michelle Farand. I live on Old Japanese Road about one mile from the slide that you've heard about. Every day I need to take Mountain Charlie Road riddled with potholes to go to work in Melpitas. Since the slide, this section of the road is seeing increased traffic. As a result, the road is rapidly deteriorating. This past weekend, some of my neighbors asked me to take a look at a hole at the bottom of the Mountain Charlie and discovered that the hole was a large void or sinkhole about five feet diameter with an opening of about six inch at the surface, though the hole was fully covered except for that little part showing on top. I immediately contacted Public Works to report the issue. Initially, a little while back, Public Works decided that a simple coal patch would suffice to close the hole. Just put a, hide the whole thing, not show it. Of course, it quickly fell apart and the hole was opened again. This was this weekend. Never mind the fact that there was nothing to backfill the asphalt and that heavy trucks go over this area every day, every day. Moreover, the sinkhole is above a drain pipe. Obviously, putting a coal patch over a sinkhole could lead to a catastrophic failure. I hope you all realize that. So obviously, putting a coal patch over a sinkhole could lead to catastrophic failure. Clearly, the country, the county doesn't care. Adding insults to injuries, the county, the county came on Monday and poured concrete in the hole with the pretext that it was a simple coupling failure on the drain pipe and the concrete would fix that. Really? They didn't think about digging the affected area, which is about six to seven feet in diameter, right? Verifying that the drain pipe is fine, repacking the ground with gravel and putting a hot patch. Road damage at the bottom of Mountain Charlie would completely block all residents from access to their home. There's 200 families. Now, we trust the same people to fix the slide at mile 1.68. They cannot fix the drain pipe. They cannot fix the road or potholes. It appears that they lack common pride in their work and see you all in court.
Thank you, sir. Morning.
Good morning. My name is Jane Subey, and I'd like to thank my county supervisor, Justin Cummings, for introducing the transgender sanctuary resolution and his staff for preparing the language. I request that the Board of Supervisors approve it unanimously. When I asked Supervisor Cummings to introduce this resolution, he immediately agreed, and for that, I am ever grateful. It's important that this be a countywide policy because we have such a diversity of residents, including a vibrant drag community in South County. We want everyone to feel protected. I support this policy because I know firsthand how it feels when a local, state, and even the federal government passes a law that attempts to control my body, my sexual behavior, my life choices, my medical care, even whom I can marry. I came out as a lesbian at age 15 in 1978, and while the LGBTQI community has made many civil rights gains over the past 45 years, innumerable efforts have been made to, have been made to legislate people's freedom of bodily autonomy, with many of those efforts succeeding. From sodomy laws to gay marriage bans to bathroom laws, forced outings at schools and restriction of access to gender-affirming care, each time an anti-gay, anti-drag, anti-woman, or anti-trans law is passed, it feels like a kick in the gut. Why are people's personal choices and private medical decisions the subject of public policy anyway? It's really no one's business. This resolution will provide an antidote to intrusive and discriminatory laws that are being passed against LGBTQI folks across this country. It pledges care and protection to some of our most vulnerable community members, many of whom are youth. It is a positive statement for Santa Cruz County to make. This resolution will send a strong message to our queer youth in particular that we have their backs. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Morning.
Morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Hugh Shiba, and I am a 35-year resident on Mountain Charlie Road, and I'm here to ask your support for the budget to help in maintaining and upgrading to a normal status all of our mountain roads. We have a large community, uh, that is in need of this support. And for me, it hits to a personal level at the point of, first, I need food, then I need shelter, then I need safety, et cetera. We have to take a look at these mountain roads and create a position of safety. I have to take care of my family, my children, my grandchildren, and this is really putting a strain personally and mentally, not only on myself, my family, but everyone else in our community. This is difficult. We look to our county to do something for us in our safety. What are the basics? I ask that you consider different thinking than what has been done before in taking care of these roads. I don't have that solution. There are other peoples in the community that have the solution, have spoken of ways, maybe some decentralization, maybe some way to allow the community to gather together to repair their own roads with help from the county. Let's think out of the box. I know that's a crazy little statement, but we have to do that, please. It's about the safety. It's about the roads. The one thing I ask from my county. Thank you.
Good morning, Supervisors. Uh, my name is Eric Lombardo. I work as the Policy Manager at the Land Trust of Santa Cruz County, and I'm here today on behalf of the organization to thank you, to thank the board, uh, for resolution item number 39, uh, supporting the Santa Cruz County Water and Wildfire Protection Initiative. Uh, I think my earlier commenter and colleague, Rachel Dan, spoke eloquently about this already, so I'll be brief and just say that we know that this will make a meaningful impact in the resources that are available for, uh, land managers, managers of our waters and natural resources to improve the health of our land base and our natural resources so that it protects us and works together with us rather than against us when we deal with that next atmospheric river that we know is coming, that next fire that we know is coming, and that next flood that we know is coming. These are difficult topics, and there are many solutions, but we're confident that this measure and this initiative, which will appear in November, will make a meaningful contribution. And the Land Trust of Santa Cruz County looks forward to working with our coalition of nonprofits and community leaders to tell that story and to share your support. So we thank you again for that resolution.
Good morning. I'm Sabrina Brennan, the Executive Director and Founder of Surf Equity, formerly known as the Committee for Equity in Women's Surfing. Our organization has been at the forefront of the fight for equal pay for women athletes. Starting in 2015, we championed the inclusion of, at Women's Heat, and equal cash prizes for women at the Mavericks Big Wave Professional Surf Competition in Half Moon Bay, just an hour up the coast from Santa Cruz. In 2018, our efforts led to the achievement of global pay parity in professional surfing. Building on this success, in 2021, I approached the Santa Cruz City, City of Santa Cruz Parks and Recreation Department with a request to update the permit process, presenting the example of the first sports equity resolution approved by the City of Half Moon Bay in 2020. In 2024, the City of Santa Cruz unanimously approved a similar resolution after completing an extensive public outreach process. Today, we are thrilled to witness the equal play and pay for sporting events resolution on your agenda. At the first, as the first county in California to approve such a resolution, Santa Cruz County sets a significant precedent, precedent, particularly given the high volume of athletic events held here. We extend our heartfelt appreciation to the dedicated efforts of your staff, especially the County Parks, Open Space and Cultural Services Department. Santa Cruz is known for its surf history and culture from the legacy of native Hawaiians riding local breaks on redwood boards to the vital work of nonprofits like Black Surf Santa Cruz, tackling racism and localism to increase ocean access and joy. Countless professional athletes have honed their skills in Santa Cruz surf breaks, inspiring generations to come. Your forward-thinking county leadership will reverberate not only throughout California, but also within the global surf community, fostering greater inclusivity and access, and accessibility in this beloved and iconic sport, as well as in other sports enjoyed by residents and visitors alike. Thank you.
Thank you.
I also want to support the LGBTQIA trans non-binary, um, resolution, which I just found out about. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. So I'm just gonna come from my heart and let you know that I'm one of the founders of Harm Reduction, which, um, you know, it's international. It was written by Ferrer and Ruth Gunmoda brought the book to Santa Cruz, and then Richard brought it to the streets. We helped to put together a drop-in center and do all that. So I've been on the streets of Santa Cruz since 1990 doing work, and I'm also a licensed marriage and family therapist and a gender specialist, which I started later in my career. So on the streets, someone walked up to me and said, Melissa, there's a mom here. Her kid needs gender-affirming care. Where are they from? Somewhere in the south. Can you be more specific? No. So there's this way in the community that we normalize it. I says, is it just her? No, she had to bring her other two kids. They're living in their car. So by creating a sanctuary of Santa Cruz as a city, it lets mothers or parents know when they drive here, they can access services because we have excellent services. And speaking of thinking outside the box, that's why I live here and I appreciate you guys. So I am here in support of Santa Cruz being a sanctuary. We have excellent trained therapists that meet once a month with medical practitioners, psychiatrists, psychologists for years. This is the perfect place to give people who are parents a voice, and I'm so excited for you to pass this so we can continue to be the accepting and loving city that we are. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Uh, good morning. My name is Denise Barr. I was here last year.
Susan, can you pull the microphone down to your mouth? Thank you.
I was here last year, and by doing that, I accomplished getting four or five signs on Pleasure Point that say, put dogs on leash. When I call the SPCA, they don't seem to have any funding for people to give out tickets. And, um, I wrote to nine different people on this organization, um, supposedly in charge of funding. Um, only one person wrote back to me. So I'm concerned. So on Pleasure Point, we have people bringing their dogs on the beach, letting them just run around, poop all over. Um, it's actually a board of health issue that you should look at very carefully because if people have no respect for other people and they can't give anybody courtesy to put their dog on a leash and they can't respect laws, you better start using some of your money to give out tickets. I'd be willing to work with anybody from the SPCA or from any of these people on this council. It's called a nine-person council. It's kind of bogus, if you ask me already. I wrote to nine people called the Joint Hours Authority. Only one person wrote back to me. Now, thank you for your interest. So I'd like to see that the people in SPCA get the funding, have actually have a person go out and give tickets to people who don't think this is an important law. I personally think it's very important. I've been attacked twice in Santa Cruz by dogs not on leashes. So please help everybody, especially disabled people who have to speak up. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good morning, Board. My name is Michelle Wall, and I'm here to talk on line item 17 as surely you just. If you have a peer review, such as the LA County Sheriff, cause is defined as a violation of any law related to the performance of their duties as a sheriff. Flagrant or repeated neglect of duties and misappropriation of public funds or property with willful falsification of relevant official statement or document or obstruction of any investigation into the conduct of the sheriff by the inspector general, sheriff or civilian. An oversight commission or any governance agency with jurisdiction to conduct such investigation was Bruce McPherson. So I have been contacting his office, and as I had relied to you, uh, a month ago, we have been shot at. I have contacted, uh, the FBI and have, uh, requested a consent decree along with my neighbors for an investigation into the Santa Cruz Sheriff's Department for deliberate disregard to the enforcement of the judge's orders on a convicted felon who is allowed to continue to shoot guns, even though he has three felonies and five felonies that they refuse to file a report on. We've also found out that in the sheriff's department, there are what they call ghosts. We know one is a son of the meth dealer and another one is a cousin to the meth dealer. There is the methamphetamine lab that the EPA was supposed to investigate, and this is hideous. So don't even think about adjusting the Board of Supervisors' income. Are you joking? Surely you just. You can't allow people to get shot at and say you're doing your job to investigate and oversee the sheriff. He needs to be kicked out or you need to do your job. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to give this to you.
Ready? Morning.
Morning. My name is Patrick Young. I, as a community member of Boulder Creek, would like to request that the community and Board of Supervisors stop the erosion and make a motion to maintain Logan Creek Road and mitigate the risks of driving on such a road. So I'm referring to agenda 70 through 75 about there. So on June 1st, my 1998 Toyota Tacoma had a CV joint failure in the left driver's side. Um, it's still in the shop with a quote of $750. Uh, this is due to me traversing said road with the purpose of remodeling Watford Pradeep. I request that the Board of Supervisors alert those who are responsible and hold them accountable to resume progress on reducing driving risk. The, if they can't be reached, I ask that the DOS create a committee committed to fixing the road. I, as a force create for State Parks, also recognize that if a fire were to occur, it would be extremely problematic to respond to such an emergency. There's a lot of situations on said road. But I think that as a community and professionally, we can engineer solutions to mitigate those risks and problems that I have ran into. So, um, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Kathy, and I live just south of the slide on Mountain Charlie Road. The reason I'm here today is because I, along with 65 other families on Mountain Charlie Road, have firsthandly experienced what it's like when the county doesn't maintain our roads. We have 37 children, school-aged children, who attend schools to the north of the slide. They no longer have a safe passage to school. Why should that be the case? Do we not pay property taxes just like everybody else does? The notion that the county thinks that they should wait for our roads to fail and then ask the federal assistant is simply flawed. They need to start maintaining our roads. Where is our property tax dollars going? In, in the mountains, the only county service that we pretty much use is our road. It is our lifeline. If you're not spending our tax dollars maintaining our road, it means you're misallocating it unfairly, spending it somewhere else. We have a right as tax-paying citizens to see the benefits of our tax dollars at work in our own region. We are a very exhausted community, but we are very determined. Supervisor Cummings and Hernandez, online, if you ratify the budget as is today, we will be coming for your seats. Supervisor McPherson, you came, you saw the slide. You noted yourself that there are other parts of the roads that are about to give out. You saw our kids traverse the slide by foot, trying to get from school to their homes. You talked to the elderly on the road, to people who had physical mobility issues. You, you took their statements. Please remember that you represent us when you vote today. You don't represent the status quo. Thank you so much. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
I believe in climate science. I believe in economic science. I came here in March. My name is Scott, and I first talked about the Mountain Charlie Road. Okay. And I stuck on afterwards, I heard Carlos give a really, um, eloquent, you know, discussion about the economic status in Santa Cruz County. I'm aware of it. Very clear thinking, and I'm glad you're on board here. But here's things. So since March, I was very naive and I've learned a lot. We've had, you know, Gail Pellerin come out. We had, uh, you know, Representative Panetta. We've had John Lehrer come out, and even McPherson came out, uh, just a couple weeks ago. So the, I was surprised that we were able to get all that showing to come out to Mountain Charlie Road. It's really impressive. But here's the thing is that since 1982, and then when we had that really bad, you know, rainstorm back then, it was like a three sigma event, you know? And now these things are happening every year. And we, we can, if you look at the roads like Hutcheson or Old Japanese Road, you know, those are real rich. They're, they're not having problems because they're well-maintained. Mountain Charlie is not. But I'm not here to talk about just Mountain Charlie because the maintenance doesn't exist just on the road. It goes to the edge of the road where all the brush and everything is grown and all these rains come in and they cause a lot of brushing. That's just, it dries up in the winter time, in summertime, and leads to fires later on. So I, maintenance is like more than just the road, it's all throughout the forest. 50% of the, the county lives in the rural area. 13% of the money goes there. More of it should be going to the county. And if you look at it from the economic science point of view, there's a lot of money in the mountains in terms of property taxes. You need to get the values up with either rezoning, like, uh, Superintendent, proposed, or just making the properties valuable so you can get more tax money come in. And that quote at the beginning, that wasn't for me. That was from Supervisor Pono during his speech in 2016. Thank you very much.
Hello, good morning. My name is David Campbell. I'm a social worker with Adult Protective Services with Santa Cruz County. On behalf of the Adult Protective Services Team with the County of Santa Cruz Human Services Department, I would like to thank the Santa Cruz County Board of Supervisors for this proclamation proclaiming June as Elder Abuse Awareness Month. Our team investigates allegations of abuse, neglect, self-neglect, and exploitation among older adults and dependent adults throughout the county. We strive to reduce risk of abuse, neglect, and enhance safety among older adults and dependent adults. The issue of elder abuse is significant, both impact and scale. According to National Council on Aging, roughly 10% of Americans over the age of 60 have experienced some form of elder abuse. Various studies estimate that issues of self-neglect adversely affect somewhere between 10 and 21% of American older adults. Upwards of one out of two of every 10 older adults in our lives may be suffering from some form of abuse, neglect, financial exploitation, or inability to meet their own needs. To put it to scale on this perspective locally, the population of older adults in Santa Cruz County aged 60 and over is estimated to reach 30% of the county's total population by 2030. It is imperative to keep in mind that we estimate only one in every 24 incidents of abuse against older adults is reported. This highlights the importance of the Santa Cruz County Proclaiming June as Elder Abuse Month. Raising awareness on the issue of elder abuse will increase attention to the issue e-spheres of seeking help and support and hopefully create a community where we all can come together and the elimination of, of older adult abuse. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good morning. My name is Shiva Farand. I live on Old Japanese Road, one mile from the slide, Mountain Charlie Road. On Easter Sunday afternoon, my family and I nearly had an accident with a Cal Fire Truck on Mountain Charlie Road. This close call highlights the dangers of relying on a narrow, single road filled with potholes, overgrown vegetation, eroded culverts, and countless blind corners. This unmaintained access road now suffers from heavy traffic by residents, contractors, and service trucks. Many of us chose to live in the mountains for its serenity. However, Mother Nature often reminds us that there is never truly a quiet time. In the 18 years my family and I have lived on the mountain, we have learned to be self-sufficient. But- But with the recent road slide, navigation has become nearly impossible without proper access. Our community of over two hundred people still needs to drive to reach Highway seventeen. Please help us to maintain and fix a safe and reliable route for residents. Thanks.
Insurance Supervisors Gary Richard Arnold. I'm looking at a magazine published this month. It's about voting machines. It is bipartisan. There's a quote here from Kamala Harris that the there's a, there's a number of states that were dealing with antiquated older voting machines. And she held a demonstration before her colleagues in Sacramento and before their eyes, each and every one of those machines were hacked. Also, the head of the Intelligence Committee, Adam Schiff, says he's continuing to think that the voting machines are vulnerable. Ron Wyden said there's something that violates cybersecurity directing people in these various areas. We have Dominion right now, I believe. And there's been a change of names. I won't go through them all because of the short amount of time, but it's the same diebolt machines that Secretary of State Bruce McPherson bought that knew were known to have backdoors in them. And that's probably why he was defeated for that office. He also during that time received thirty thousand dollars from Red Chinese Communist Triple Spy, front page US News and Row report. We had other quotes from Jerry Nadler and many others. Now, people that do single paper balloting are such third world countries. It's Germany, Japan, UK, Australia, Canada, Argentina, Sweden, Spain, Norway, and again, I could go on and on. And for that ladies concerned about the sheriff, there's two members up here that threatened the life and property of the Grange. One of them was John Leopold. The other was Zach Fran. The sheriff has done nothing. There are two points of power.
Good morning. My name is Becky Steinbruner. Chairman Cummings, I want to thank you for bringing the proclamation Sunday to Bruce Bratton at the celebration and the board proclaiming today Bruce Bratton Day. Had it not been for his efforts and those like him back in the seventies, Santa Cruz County would have had a nuclear reactor in Davenport. So it takes a lot of people working together to protect our community, our environment. And Bruce Bratton led the way along with Catherine Byers and many other good people. There are many good people working in the trenches still. I want to speak with you about consent item thirty. The county policy and procedure manual changes. I protest the non-travel food reimbursements at a time when the county is in a negative cash flow. I think it is disgusting, quite frankly, to approve new policy to allow departments to have gatherings, providing them food, providing food as incentive for people to come to such things. I think that should be stricken from this policy change, especially at a time when our county needs to practice austerity. Item number thirty-two, I am glad that the General Services Department got an eight hundred thousand dollar grant for the water treatment at the Roundtree Well. I would like to again ask that you follow the County Water Advisory Commission's recommendations to provide bottled water to the inmates and staff at Roundtree until those changes are made. This is relating to Chrome Six and the changing MCLs that will become final in October. Chrome Six is carcinogenic at a very low level as is PFOS. Both are there. Finally, I protest your endorsement of an item number thirty-nine of the Land Trust Tax Bill that's coming up. You cannot do that.
Your time is up. Thank you.
Thank you. And I have filed a
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Good morning, Supervisors. My name is Eric Hansen and I am a licensed civil engineer living on Mountain Charlie Road for the last thirty years. I stand behind all the comments made here about Mountain Charlie Road and its significant impact to the community and residents. Over two hundred families or people are being impacted as well as typical commerce and traffic on the road. If there were a fire on that road, we risk a significant loss of life, similar to what was experienced in Paradise. The community largely lives up on the top of the road and the bottom of the road is very narrow and very difficult to evacuate quickly. I also want to highlight that the Public Works Department has been quick to respond to our requests for help. However, I'm very concerned that they don't have the resources to properly maintain and repair the roads. I've been up there with Assistant Director Steve Wiesner, who's witnessed the culverts that are in disrepair and leaking and essentially arguably the cause of the collapse that we're now facing. Just recently, as which was recently mentioned, we're now seeing another collapse of the bottom of the road, potentially locking the residents into that area. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leanna Swartwood and I am a resident on Mountain Charlie Road. I'm a mother of two. I'm a teacher at a preschool on Summit Road, which and a member of church. I have two little ones in school in a community that I am now cut off from. It's frustrating to be cut off from my community. But I can't begin to explain what this road has done to my mental health, what it has done to my anxiety. I'm driving down the south end of Mountain Charlie into Scotts Valley, back on seventeen just to get my children to school. And I do this two or three times a day sometimes. I have now, now I've got a hole in my bumper that I can put my foot through because I'm getting ran off the road by PG&E trucks, by tree service trucks. I cannot tell you how many times I've almost seen a cyclist get hit coming around a blind corner. And mark my words, gentlemen, there is going to be a fatality on that south side between the traffic and the cyclist now that we have double the traffic. In March, I had to take my daughter to an urgent care on a Sunday. It took me an hour and ten minutes to get my daughter to medical attention while she's running a high fever and violently throwing up in my trashed minivan. But as of this Sunday, when I saw a hole start, and I apologize if I get emotional, it scared me to death. Mountain Charlie is not going to make it another three winters. It's not going to make it one more atmospheric river. We're not going to make it through fire season. You are going to have eighty-plus people that are going to have a serious problem when a fire comes through. And this is going to make national news and not in a good way. Something has to be done, gentlemen. We have got to find the money to do this. This is a life and death situation for all of us. And I am terrified for fire season right now. It is more than just a little bit of extra time to drive. This is serious. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to ask, I want to ask you all to hold your applause, please. You can use spirit hands if you want, but we want to just be respectful of everyone who's going to come up. So thank you.
Good morning. Good morning, Board of Supervisors. My name is Debbie Robinson and I have lived on Mountain Charlie Road for fourteen years now and it is horrible up there. I mean, we really, I'm begging you to please consider giving our roads more money. I mean, we're taxpaying citizens. We deserve to have infrastructure in place so that we can get to our jobs. We can get our children safely to school and safely home from school. I have a teenage daughter who is a newer driver and one day she had to pull over on the south side of Mountain Charlie and she was in tears thankfully. And a very nice neighbor stopped to help her, but she had gotten stuck in a ditch. And I worry every day when she has to drive that road. And a lot of times now we're just crossing over the slide, which is just as dangerous and the hopes that, you know, we can reduce our commute to school or to work. So I am just begging you, please to consider giving more money to our roads. We are taxpaying citizens. We deserve to have safe, reliable roads to get us safely to school and to work. Thank you.
Good morning. My name's Emily Beaver. I'm also a resident that lifts off of Mountain Charlie Road. I'm a mother. I'm an attorney. I have two young children who attend two different schools. Like Leanna, we have to drive a very long way to get our children to school. And the fact that this is on a one to three-year potential indefinite timeline with no funding in sight is just unacceptable. This is not a single issue. This is a larger systemic problem in terms of funding available for preventative maintenance and overall maintenance of the county roads. They are our lifeline up there. Most of us are on solar. We have wells. We are really only need the support of our roads to get where we need to go. I'd like to ask the board to prioritize providing additional funding in twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five to maintaining county roads and coming up with a plan that is sustainable. The current model of being incredibly both risk adverse, taking a long time and then not engaging in preventative maintenance is economically inefficient. And it's putting us in danger and it's having real-time impact on our community. From the house down the road that was trying to sell, a couple who's trying to retire, they had to cut it by two hundred fifty thousand dollars. This is going to have lots of downstream impacts and the longer it takes, the deeper those impacts are going to be. The more risks there are, the more time that we're operating with a single, narrow passageway for escape. This is important. This is core to the foundation of a community, of your constituents. We need a functional road. This is just basics.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you all for being here. I'm Dr. Marilyn Mariposa Bernstein, a licensed acupuncturist. And I was coming here first to say thank you for hopefully adopting the item number thirty-seven to have this be a sanctuary for transgendered people. I also want to say that even though I live in Live Oak, I got caught in forty minutes of traffic last night and I was annoyed. So I can't even imagine the fear and frustration of the people on Charlie Road. And maybe there can be some other creative solutions like buses that pick up kids on one side and drop them off the other. I don't know. There, there has to be a way we could work together. I also want to say that as an acupuncturist, I've worked with a lot of transgendered people to help them with their health. And even though this isn't a supervisor thing, I wrote to Manu to say that if you could all contact Governor Newsom, all of you in the room too, there the state Assembly and Senate have passed a budget to keep acupuncture in the Medi-Cal budget. We have a lot of people in this community that get Medi-Cal for drug addiction and as well as many other things. So it, it really helps to have the state funding in that. So if everyone could write to Governor Newsom and say, please don't veto the state budget that the Health Committee has put together. They also cut things for domestic violence survivors and the Native American Indian Council, many other things. So please write Newsom and say, balance the budget by keeping healthcare in. It'll pay in the long run. So thank you for your support.
Thank you.
For Supervisors, my name is Donald Ferris and I'm also a Mountain Charlie resident. And would just echo what my neighbors have already said that I would urge you to reconsider some way to either reform the budget or come up with some creative ideas to get some funding available for that. The anxiety level is incredibly high. The probabilities of either serious injury or deaths happening with people having to cross Glenwood to get onto seventeen to go to Los Gatos Schools or to go to San Jose for work is incredibly high. And the idea that it's going to be three years or more before the action can start is just untenable. It's just, it's unreasonable. And so I'm again urging you. We are part of a community of five homes that are completely, we're right at the slide and we have no vehicle access on or off of our property. We have an uncooperative neighbor who will not let us use his driveway. He doesn't live there. So there's no access for us. We have some senior citizens in their seventies and eighties. We have a two-year-old child. We have people with mobility issues. It's just dangerous as we're thinking not right now, but thinking of the winter and fire season that this is just going to be horrible. And so we are asking you, please, please, please take some action, be creative and be there supporting for us as we pay taxes and measure K, et cetera, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Are there any other, let me ask you again, please hold your applause on this. And we're going to have a very, we have an item on our afternoon agenda related to roads and funding of roads. So we will be having some discussion around this topic later. I'd like to ask if there's any member of the public who's sitting here in chambers who would like to speak, who hasn't spoken already. Okay, seeing none, are there members of the public who are online who'd like to speak to us?
Yes, Chair, we have callers. Caller user one, your microphone is now available.
Marilyn Garrett, as the county is installing 5G, as they call it, upgrades to all the cell towers, antennas, et cetera. This book says, Light on What's Going On? The Contagion Myth, Why Viruses Including Coronavirus Are Not The Cause Of Disease by Dr. Thomas S. Callen and Sally Fallon Morell. And a chapter here on electricity and disease. We are already familiar with millimeter wave technology. This is the frequency of airport scanners. I'm reading from page fourteen, which can see through your clothes. Children and pregnant women are not required to go through these scanners, a nod to potential dangers. Adults get zapped a second or two. 5G bases in the same kind of radiation, twenty-four seven. A particular concern is the fact that some 5G transmitters broadcast at sixty gigahertz, a frequency that is absorbed by oxygen, causing the oxygen molecule compound of two oxygen atoms to split apart, making it useless for respiration. On September sixth, twenty-six, two thousand nineteen, 5G wireless was turned on at Wuhan, China and officially launched November first with a grid of about ten thousand 5G base stations. More than exists, at least at that time, in the entire US, all concentrated in one city. A spike in cases occurred on February
Sanjay, your microphone is now available.
Great. Thank you. Hi, my name is Sanjay Kondalwal and I'm a resident of the summit area. Actually not on Mountain Charlie Road, but I am a, in the area. I am fairly involved in the community up here and can confidently say that roads is one of the five things that we all care about as far as services from the county go. Supervisor Konek has heard me talk about this multiple times. I would urge you all to please allocate dollars in the budget for county roads. They are important to us. They are very important to everybody who lives up here. They are access point. They allow us to get to work. They allow us to earn money, to pay the property taxes that are needed and please support county roads. Thank you.
Dean, your microphone is now available. Dean, your microphone is now available.
Hello, is that me?
Hello. Sorry, yes, Cassandra.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for taking my call. My name is Cassandra Brown. And I am calling in support of the eviction events, Defense Collaborative, the Tenant Sanctuary. I'm a renter and have been a renter in Santa Cruz County for twenty-five years. And I'm good standing with all my landlords. And this year I got evicted from my landlady because something I said to my landlady that made her so angry. And I had lived in her house and redid her house for, I've lived in her house for eight years and had remodeled it and done great things for her and worked for her. And it was quite shocking that that had happened to me because we were such good friends. I wasn't aware that there was such a thing as a tenant sanctuary. And I went to them and they helped me go to mediation with my landlady. And I learned that I was protected under the Tenant Protection Act. So as a renter and then, and we have such housing difficulties here in this county, I urge the Board of Supervisors to continue supporting this great service for people who are powerless. And so, yeah, I just want to say that this, this service made me feel, went from feeling very powerless to powerful. So I took her to mediation anyways. And there was, you know, not the best, a happier ending in the whole situation. So thank you very much and thank you for your service, County Board of Supervisors.
Dean, your microphone is now available.
Good morning. I am Jean Brockelbank, resident of Live Oak. I have carefully followed the development of the Simpkins Library Annex Project for over seven years. Regarding consent agenda item number sixty-one, I am troubled with several parts of the memorandum of understanding because I see the staffing of the annex to be problematic. Director Gaffney's memo to this board states, quote, "County parks will, will provide staff to monitor the annex during open hours." However, the MOU itself on page three states that county parks may, that's may, provide staffing to regularly monitor the annex portion of the facility. The word may is not the word will. If there are times when county staff may not be present to monitor the annex, this will be an open invitation to the misuse of computers, possible theft of materials, or other bad behaviors. Public libraries have, always have employees present. The annex is still part of the Live Oak Ranch Library. I ask for your consideration, members of the board, of the contradiction of terms as presented in the staff memo compared to what is actually in the memorandum of understanding. This is a legal document, right? Will there be monitoring of the use of this new facility? Or are we left with, there may be monitoring? Please, let's be clear about this. Thank you.
Cecilia, your microphone is now available.
Hi, my name is Cecilia Phillips. And I am calling from Watsonville in regards to Paulson Road. So basically, Paulson Road has been closed. It's, there's, we don't have access to it. I live on the, I live near Alianza School, about half a block. And it's been, it's been really inconvenient, not just for me, but the neighbors, students, parents, teachers. There's two schools near the corner of Casserly Road and Paulson Road. And that is Alianza School and the Charter School for the Arts. So even though now we're going into summer, and that is something to consider, there's still going to be traffic because there's neighbors and people that need to basically access Green Valley Road. So what's been happening for me and my husband personally is that we have to go all the way around Casserly to Green Valley and then go down Green Valley to access, you know, the freeway to access clubs, Safeway, et cetera. And we can't really go down East Lake because East Lake is so backed up. So basically, I guess what I'm asking is to please consider opening up Paulson Road so that we can have access to Green Valley Road rather than having to go all the way around. And also look into fixing the road in the near future. I know that's probably going to be on the agenda. But in the meantime, to consider opening the road for so many people who need access. Thank you.
Amanda, your microphone is now available.
Hi, I am another one of the residents off of Mountain Charlie Road. I am one of the handful of residents that are stranded off of Mountain Charlie Road, right at the slide. I can't, I can't begin to describe how disheartening it has been to hear that no money is going to be offered based off of our taxes to maintain a road that I'm paying taxes for, that I must use to go do my job. I don't have a choice to go around. And I can't get to my job very easily. I'm missing work more frequently than I have, and I work in healthcare. And when I work in healthcare, I expect that when I call nine-one-one, someone will come for me on a road, and I don't have a road. And I, I have to echo the concern of all of my residents, my neighbors, about fire season and another months or another weather event that's going to worsen this road and how it will continue to worsen all the roads here if they're not maintained properly. We have so many rusted culverts along Mountain Charlie with this term of, quote, deferred maintenance. If I applied deferred maintenance in my profession, I think there would be a lot of outcry there too, personally. I please urge you to consider us as residents and taxpayers that, like many of us, the main thing that we rely on with our taxes out here in the unincorporated areas is our fire support and our roads. And that's the only thing that I'm asking from my county at the moment. Thank you.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you to everyone who's come on to speak on various items affecting our community here today. So I'm going to turn it back to the board to see if there's any questions or comments. I'll turn over to Supervisors first.
Yeah, I'd like to address, since there's so many people that have discussed the road situation, we have a one-thirty. They may not be able to be here. I, I'd like to get an update of just where we are in this situation. Generally, Santa Cruz County is in a budgetary and road crisis. There's no, no shortcoming of it. And to think that we could just go to the general fund and tap that is really irresponsible. It's oversubscribed as we speak. What are you going to hit? Human health, healthcare services, sheriff, whatever, public safety? I think we need to find a, a new dedicated source of funding to address the road situation in this county. We, we've all heard about the shortcomings we have in the amount we are able to get from property taxes and so forth. To change that, you're going to have to go through kind of state situation. You're going to, we're going to impact schools. I just think that we need to address how we can form a dedicated source of funding somehow to address roads particularly. And believe me, I hear and we hear more than anything else in my district, roads, roads, roads. I get it. And we do not have the funding dedicated to, to address this. I mean, the Mount Charlie Road could be three to four million dollars itself. Paulson Road could be the same, the two that we've heard about this morning. So I'd just like to get a sense of where we are and what might be done from our CDI Director, Matt Machado. So some of these folks probably can't be here at one-thirty this afternoon to get an update of where we are and what might be, what we might be able to do.
If I could, Supervisor McPherson, if I could provide some context and background information first, and then Director Machado can follow up with some of the more details. The county is facing a major crisis with our infrastructure due to climate change. We have had seven federally declared natural disasters in the last six years. This is unprecedented. We've never had that many natural disasters in this shorter time period. In years past, we would have had one. We've had seven, including two thousand seventeen, two thousand twenty, which was the largest fire the county had ever seen, two thousand twenty-three, we had two major storm events. We have done an incredible amount of work to repair our roads. In fact, from two thousand seventeen to today, we have spent three hundred and fifteen million dollars on road repairs. This is double the amount that we used to spend. In fact, we spent more than we had. We spent three hundred and fifteen million dollars repairing roads. And we only had two hundred and ninety-seven million dollars of resources. So we overspent our budget repairing roads. And that's why we had to go into debt and issue a bond at our last meeting. It's incredible, but that we have completed two hundred and eighty-two projects since two thousand seventeen. I have a list of them here. It's amazing. This is the list of all the projects we've completed. And there's projects on Glenwood Drive, Redwood Oak Drive, China Grade Road, Lockport Gulch, Eureka Canyon, Loma Prieta, Green Valley, Hazel Dell, Isaianti, Bear Creek. It's amazing the amount of work we've done trying to keep up with all the storm damage that we have done. And we've amazingly completed two hundred and eighty-two projects. And we have still not been able to keep up. We have, right now, eight roads in the county are closed. And we have eighty-eight projects still not funded, eighty-eight across the county. In the budget, we do have eighty-three million dollars set aside for road repair and road damage repair. So in the budget, twenty-four, twenty-five, we have eighty-three million dollars for roads. There'll be thirty, eleven million of that is for twenty twenty-three storms, which comprises thirty-two projects. Again, all of these are road slipouts, slides, things like that. We also have two thousand seventeen, thirty-one projects. We have eleven million dollars for two thousand seventeen. We also have fourteen, fifteen million dollars for road resurfacing, five point seven for bridges, and another eight million dollars for road maintenance and weed control. So we have eighty-three million dollars in the budget. The difficulty we are facing is primarily due to the fact that we are not getting timely reimbursement from FEMA. And so FEMA is our main issue in that we are spending money and we are taking five to six years to get reimbursed by FEMA. And so that is the reason that we've had a cash flow problem, why we spent two hundred and fifty million dollars just on the disaster response. And we've only been reimbursed half of that, one hundred and twenty-five million. And so anyway, we are working with FEMA to try and make sure, and our legislators, to see if that process can be reformed, to see if there's a way that they can speed up reimbursement, which that would then reimburse us, which would allow us to take on even more projects than we're planning to. That is an issue nationwide. FEMA is underfunded nationwide. FEMA is under crisis nationwide. Climate change is hitting the country everywhere, from hurricanes to tornadoes to fires in Maui. They're all demanding resources from FEMA. And so I, I get it. It's a difficult situation for FEMA, but that's our primary holdup in terms of being able to speed up these repairs as they come on. That's just a background information in terms of the financial situation we are in. I'll turn over to Director Machado to add some more detail on the, on these issues.
Thank you, Carlos, and thank you, Chair Cummings and members of the board, Matt Machado, your CDI Director. Just a couple of updates on Mountain Charlie and some of the damage up there. We heard today about the new damage that was discovered on Sunday. And that was a culvert that was showing almost modes of failure. And what happened was, was that the culvert was pulled apart at a joint. It's a sign of the mountain moving a bit. The culvert actually is in good shape, no rust. But the joint pulled apart and was pulling dirt, formed a sinkhole. Our crews went out there yesterday, cut a hole in the road, about a three foot by four foot. They went down, repaired the joint, and then backfilled the hole, capping it with, I believe, concrete just so that it would fill all the voids and be a solid surface. It is a permanent repair and it's repaired as of today. With regard to the, the big slide at post mile one point six six, we are working very closely with Cal OES and FEMA for trying to get it included in either the two thousand twenty-three disaster declaration or the two thousand twenty-four disaster declaration. If we're successful, we will continue to work with FEMA to get obligation for that site, which then could lead us into final design and construction, repair of both the road and hopefully the driveway, which will be a partnership with the community. On that design note, we are working on a preliminary design so we know the scope of the damage and the magnitude of the cost. We are wrapping up this week a geotechnical report that has identified the mode of failure. And it's a landslide that was caused by excessive rains in two thousand twenty-three and two thousand twenty-four that has taken out the driveway, the private driveway and the road. With that geotechnical analysis, we now have a conceptual design that we will pursue once we get obligation from FEMA. That conceptual design would include a soldier pile wall on Mountain Charlie. Early estimates are about three million dollar repair for the, for the county road. And then for the private driveway, our conceptual design would be a MSC wall, mechanically stabilized earth wall. And we think the cost estimate on that's around a million dollars. So there's a ways to go, but we're working as hard as we can to not only pursue the technical side, but also pursue FEMA and Cal OES assistance to include it into one of those disaster declarations. Thank you. I certainly can answer any questions you may have.
I can, I talked to Senator Laird and I know that he was going to try to get in touch directly with OES. And, and I know Congressman Panetta is very much aware, as well as Assemblywoman Pellerin. They're working literally overtime. This is not going to satisfy people at Mountain Charlie. I get it. This is going to take time. But this is the way the system works. It does, it is just not fast enough for anybody. I can imagine that we just heard reports of a fire, you know, went over the hill yesterday or over the weekend. It's a scary situation and I, we, every member of this board is very understanding of the crisis situation that you're facing. We're trying to do what we can as quickly as we can with the funding assets that are available or not available at this time that we're trying to yet. And I know the two big ones that we're talking about is Mount Charlie and Paulson Road in the South County. Is Paulson Road, is the same, same kind of a situation there?
Well, it is. It's similar in terms of magnitude. We think the, the repair of that road is probably in the two to three million dollar range. And unfortunately, it doesn't appear to be a part of a, there doesn't seem to be an opportunity to include it into a federally declared disaster. It was part of a creek redirection and it just doesn't seem to have momentum to get into a disaster. So it's probably a little bigger challenge, but we're certainly looking at it and trying to come up with some solutions. And so we'll just keep working on that one as well. I, I would add if, if the board would like a bit of an update on Mountain Charlie. Dave Reed has been working with utilities and, and he may be able to provide some additional information if, if you want to hear more on the Mountain Charlie struggles.
Thank you, Chair, Board, Dave Reed, Director of OR Three. I did want to just highlight a couple of things that our office is coordinating with the state and local and federal government. As Director Machado mentioned, I was in conversation last week and, and yesterday with PG&E. So one of the, the callers is one of the families that's acutely impacted by the, the driveway failure. PG&E has a, a power line. PG&E has a power line, a power pole and a power line that we need to get moved so that they can create some better temporary ingress and egress. So we're working closely with PG&E to try and get that moved quicker. They're scheduled to do it in July. We want to try and move that up so that they have better ingress and egress. So that's the six families or so that don't have a driveway and have been kind of traversing haphazardly through their neighbor's property to try and get in and out. So they're the most acutely impacted. So we're working with PG&E closely. The other thing I wanted to highlight for all board members, for all community members, the county is one of three counties in the state that was awarded the, awarded is probably not the right word, but was declared a Small Business Administration federal rural federal disaster declaration. So that means every resident in the county who may have sustained damage during this winter period might be eligible for Small Business Administration loans. The reason that's important, particularly for the Mount Charlie residents, and particularly for the community members that are impacted by the driveway, is as Director Machado said, it may be up to a million dollar repair of their driveway. So that's private property infrastructure. The SBA rural declaration may give them an opportunity to access resources outside of their own private resources, a low interest loan, about the lowest interest loan you can get to help with that long-term fix. So we're going to be working closely with community members around the county, but particularly with the Mount Charlie folks to make sure they register. We have asked, and the SBA will be here in person next week to help people through that application process, and we just need to get people to apply so that they're in the system. The other thing I wanted to mention for the good of the board and the community is our EPSS system is active now. So PG&E has turned the switch on that, so we will be seeing those intermittent power outages, but that is the effort they make to reduce utility wildfire starts. And then there is a community meeting that OR3 is having within collaboration with CDI later this month with the Mount Charlie community to give them further updates as we continue to work daily on issues related to the repair, both at the state level, federal level, and local level.
Date is set.
That's June twenty-seventh. So we did make, for those in chambers, those online, we used our CruzAware platform to notify folks. CDI used the CruzAware platform. That's our alert and warning communication system. We want to make sure that everybody has that. Everybody's connected on Mount Charlie and all of our mountain roads, all of our community members. That's our primary tool for communicating through alert and warning if we need to get you out. The other thing I want to highlight is later this month, we will be doing a NOAA weather radio test, and that's another tool. So we want to make sure from an emergency communication standpoint that everybody that lives in the rural part of our county has as many tools in the communication toolbox so we can reach them if we need to. So NOAA radios and CruzAware are two important members of those tools. That's all I have unless there's other questions.
Are there any other items on consent that you wanted to speak to? I'm sorry? We'll get through, let's finish up with Supervisor McPherson.
Yeah, a couple of other measures that I wanted, or issues. Item thirty in the land trust measure, that was, thank you Chair Cummings for bringing that to the board. It was, it qualified for the ballot because of adequate number of signatures that the general public was able to get to put it on the board. And this plan, it really does have a lot to offer, and I think it's going to be to bolster our natural resources as well as direct the county funding for parks and other resiliency measures and fire prevention as well. On item forty-one, the Fish and Wildlife Commission funding allocation request, I want to thank the commission for this item, to bring it to the board, responding quickly to support the community organizations that responded to the crisis of pelican birds. Items forty-three and forty-four, this is again, it's been a regular item on the agenda, the Big Basin State Water Grant and County Budget allocations. I want to thank the Office of Resource Response Recovery Resilience as the county's water, as well as the County Water Resources Division for working with our corner-pointed receiver and Big Basin Water and the state for this grant. It's absolutely critical. As we have noted before, this will be stabilized the operations for about six months, and we're very, very pleased with the receiver and carrying this forward. We anticipate more outside funding will be needed until the rates are more in line with the cost of operating the system. Those will be established later when the receiver lets us know what the cost might be. And to that end, on item forty-four specifically, I'm glad my office was able to set aside a sixty-five thousand dollars during the last two budget cycles to support the Big Basin Water Recovery and Transition. As the county and state have learned through this process, the receiver needs as much leeway as possible to right the ship, and we're going to continue with that effort, but it's been a Herculean effort, a multifaceted effort from the county to get this onboard so Big Basin can have a water and wastewater system. Also on forty-five and forty-six, the resiliency measures, just a quick thank you to our OR3 staff again. Dave Reed and his company, his staff for their continued work to secure state and federal grant funding to build the resiliency against wildfires and promote the watershed risk reduction projects, very much appreciated. And item number seventy, seventy-four, as was mentioned today by someone, I believe, the thank you for the CDI for bringing these contracts to the board as you do nearly every board meeting to keep the emergency work done. There is a lot of work being done on emergency infrastructure, particularly roads and so forth, that is being done, multimillion dollar efforts being carried out by the county, and it's much appreciated. Wish we had more, don't we all? But that's what we have, and we've done an excellent job with the funds that we've had. So I much appreciate that from all the departments that are involved.
Thank you very much, Supervisor Hernandez.
Yes, I had some comments on the presentation from Matt Machado and David Reed, and some questions on the presentation from Carlos just right now. You know, I think that we should probably take a look at, looking at Paulson, because I think that some of the, some of the flooding that occurred in that area was because of the sediment that occurred during the floods, some of the floods that occurred during January and the breach, you know, in March, because of that sediment during January just kind of overflowed and breached that. There was a makeshift kind of levee that they had there, and it broke it during that March storm. So we should just try to see if we can send it in for an emergency repair and see if we can do that. But I think that the other, the other thing that I wanted to ask is, you know, some of the public comment was, is that we don't put money into that region over there by Mount Charlie, but one of the things that I always struggled is trying to get some of the emergency money here into Paulson and some other roads in the district from SB one funds. And so I wanted to ask Carlos, what's the total amount of SB one funds that we get? And how much really goes to that region and, and, and that, you know, what Mount Charlie's region for these emergency repairs?
Yeah, I can address that this afternoon during budget hearings. We can't really comment on the public comment because it's not on the agenda. But during the budget presentation, we will discuss roads and the funding that's available.
Do you have any other comments on the agenda?
No.
Okay, all right. With that Supervisor Conick.
Thank you, Chair. Few items. First on item thirty-six, appointing Justin Nielsen to the alternate planning commissioner. I just want to thank Mr. Nielsen for volunteering for this important position. On item fifty-five, accepting and filing the update on the county behavioral health bridge housing program. Really excited to see this move forward. And for those of you who haven't checked it out, the LifeArc technology that, and we're engaging LifeArc to build this, these thirty-four units of transitional housing on county property. And they've got a really great video on their website that is very inspiring to see where we might be going with housing in general. And so great that we're starting to pull down the state funds and moving forward with the project that will open by the end of the year. That's fantastic. On item fifty-nine, approving the agreement with Ross Recreation Equipment for the Floral County Playground Renovation Project. Decided also that this project is moving forward. The playground renderings look great. And of course, this is made possible by a heroic effort by county park friends and number of neighborhood volunteers who really led this fundraising effort, and also by transient occupancy taxes. So this is an example of the tax we receive from vacation rentals and hotels going back to work in the community. On item sixty-one, I did want to ask for clarification. This is on the approving the MOU with the Santa Cruz Public Libraries with our Parks Department as it relates to the management of the Live Oak Library Annex. Let's see, Director Gaffney here. If you could quickly clarify, I mean, is this, you know, is there a mayor or shall here as far as park staff looking after this space? I did have an opportunity to, to look at the new annex. I know there are some challenges around areas that are out of sight, you know, from the desk at Simkins there, you know, are we going to, how are we going to make sure that this area is properly staffed? And is it, is it a mayor or shall here?
Good morning, Board. Thank you Supervisor Conick. We have a one controlled access point for, as you're probably aware of, at Simkins Family Swim Center. It's also a community center. So we will be able to monitor people that are coming and going. We've actually may have noticed we added a desk so that the line of sight is improved. We have a staff member monitoring that area. So we also want to work with the libraries because they have very specific skill sets that our staff does not have. Our staff are very good at greeting the public and managing public access, but as far as handling library and activities that go on a library, that's not our staff's expertise. The library is still, they have a new director that they're potentially appointing, I believe, this week. And so we look forward to working with that new director and identifying what resources he would like to use and how we'd work with him.
Great. Can you just address the discrepancy between the board memo, which said that we shall monitor the area and the share contract?
Yeah, we will absolutely be monitoring the entrance. So that's probably where the confusion is, is we will have staff there from six in the morning until seven o'clock at night. And the library hours are in between that, so our staff will be available for that one central access point.
And then should we send this MOU back for a slight update here to make sure that that's reflected in the?
No, I think the MOU actually is a lesser description of that. It says May for the MOUs. The MOU is actually about the internal components of the library, the actual piece. So having been in there, you're now familiar with the fact that the library annex is actually part of our community rooms. So the community rooms and librarianics share the same physical space. So our staff will absolutely be monitoring people that come in from the one access point. But as you get into the actual library itself, the annex piece, that's entirely a decision to be made as we may do it with the library, or the library may do it because their staff may be there twenty weeks, twenty hours a week, and our staff may be there because we're sharing physical space.
I see. So we don't want to obligate our staff to be there when library staff may be there.
Exactly.
Gotcha. All right. Thank you for answering. Item sixty-four, approving amendments to agreements with Fourleaf, Bureau of Veritas, North America, and CSG Consultants for building permit plan check services. I want to thank the CDI Department for bringing these forward because it will address the bottleneck in approving new permits and make sure that, you know, we are addressing the housing crisis in a timely way. You know, of course, ultimately, I would love to see more in-house planners doing this work rather than having to contract it out. And I noted in the item that it says we've seen a quadrupling of permit applications in the last twelve years, but only doubling of staff. So basically doubling of work for our staff. Appreciate all the hard work that our staff is doing to keep up with the demands. And I think ultimately, long term, we need to look at better funding this department so that we can keep, keep county planners, who are the real experts on our local codes, doing this work. Those are all my comments. I also have comments for Rhodes for the afternoon. Thanks.
Supervisor, thank you, Mr. Chair. Just two brief comments. First is on item twenty-nine, which deals with the Criminal Justice Council and the extension of the one year for one year of the JPA. Obviously, I'm supportive of that extension. I will just say that I think that the CJC has accomplished a lot in the last few years, and I'll just like to flag the fact that I have some concerns about the idea of the dissolution. I understand there's some desire of the CJC board to do that, but I think it's a very unique skill set that that body brings together. That's one of the few opportunities to have that kind of collaborative countywide, and I think it can be very, well, we've shown that can be very impactful and very powerful. So I recognize that this is an interest in exploring the dissolution after the one year, but I just want to flag for future boards in the CJC board that I don't think that that's actually the best direction to take. I would like to see the CJC continue on. Maybe the scope could shift. I think that, that the criminal justice needs have shifted from its more narrow look in gang violence protection, prevention and education. I think that that's an idea. But I'll leave it to a future board once this one-year extension is done to have that consideration, but I'd just like to flag that right now. On item sixty-nine, appreciation for CDI for the OPTAS Adaptive Signal Project and obtaining the funding through the airboard for a decent portion of that. This is, I mean, it's one of the largest bottlenecks in the county from a traffic perspective, and this is going to have a pretty significant environmental impact and also just quality of life impacts. I appreciate that investment and obtaining that grant funding. That's all, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Just have a couple of brief comments. Item number twenty-nine, I do, I completely agree with Supervisor Friend that there's been a lot of really good work over the past few years that's come out of the Criminal Justice Council and definitely appreciate this one-year extension, but I hope that we can continue that moving forward because it's been very positive and a very great collaboration to have all those people from the various agencies at the table, especially when situations arise in the community we need to respond. Having everybody already in one group that really reflects the full scope of public safety in our community, I think is really beneficial. So I hope we can continue the conversation for keeping funding for that group to move forward. Item number thirty-seven, this is adopting the resolution declaring Santa Cruz County a sanctuary county for transgender, gender, queer, non-binary, gender, fluid, and intersex people. I just want to thank Jane Sueby for bringing this to my attention. Across the country, we see people's reproductive rights being at threat and their rights to determine who they want to marry and who they want to be at threat. And this actually was first done in the city of Sacramento. And I believe that passing this resolution today will be the first county in California to take this step forward. And I think it really does send a signal to people who identifies LGBTQ in our community that we, this is a community where they should feel safe and where their local government has, is supportive of them. And so I just want to appreciate this being brought to our attention, and hopefully we can take action to support that today. And then item number thirty-eight is in line. Just want to congratulate our LGBT community on it being Pride Month in the County of Santa Cruz and by displaying the pride flag. It also acknowledges the people who identify as LGBTQ in our community and also the support that our local government provides for those members of our community. So excited to see that move forward as well. Item number thirty-nine, the land trust initiative. I just want to again congratulate the land trust and all their hard work to get this item put on our ballot for our community members to ultimately consider during the November election. And it'll bring in some very needed funds to help us address not only keeping our open space available for folks who are wanting to get outside more and creating access, but also trying to address some of the issues within our open space around fire prevention, vegetation management. And so really want to express my support for this and was happy to put this on for the land trust. Item forty-six, this is really, it's a fire safety funding, and I just want to thank Dave Reed and his team for securing a second round of funding to help with wildfire mitigation and wildfire risk reduction. It's, you know, I think it's worth us trying to consider how we can leverage these kinds of funding opportunities to also help residents keep getting dropped from their insurance because as the county is bringing in more resources to reduce fire risk, it'd be great if we could see that reflected in people being able to keep their insurance as well. And then item forty-seven, just wanted to also thank Dave Reed and his team for their work to secure funding to conduct community emergency response training. I mean, we've been hearing a lot of folks who want to see how they can get, help get involved when it comes to emergency response and being a part of the collective effort to, to help during emergency situation. And I guess I did have one question for Dave. How do we let people know about the training opportunities that this grant is going to help fund?
Thank you, Chair, Dave Reed, OR3 Director. We have one of those trainings coming up this month, so we've been advertising that in the South County area. And our CERT auxiliary is doing some additional outreach, so we're going to continue to push their messaging as they schedule those. So this grant is actually implemented by our CERT auxiliary community members, and we'll be amplifying when they schedule those additional trainings.
Great. Well, please keep us informed so we can also share in our newsletters.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Item fifty-five, the County Navigation Center. Just want to again thank staff and appreciate them for their work on this and for all the progress that's been made on providing another low barrier navigation center and support for people experiencing homelessness in our county. And then last item, item number sixty, the equal pay in play. I just really want to thank Sabrina Brennan, who brought this to the attention of our office and who also was in close conversation with county parks throughout the development of this policy. I think it's really going to help advance. I think it's really going to help advance equity across sporting events within our community. And our hope is that this can be, you know, this can continue and move forward across the state. It's, it's really sad to see that it's taken us so long to get to this point where we're ensuring that, you know, people of different genders are getting the same amount of pay for, you know, participating in sports events. And so this is great to see that this will help make progress on that issue. And with that, if there's no further questions or comments from board members, I'd like to see if they're, I'd like to entertain a motion on the consent agenda with the exception of item number twenty-eight, which has been pulled from consent.
I'll move consent. Second.
To a motion by Supervisor Friend, second by Supervisor Koenig. And with that, I'll turn it to the clerk for a roll call vote.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Brent?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
And Cummings?
Aye. That passes unanimously. All right. So with that, I'll take a brief five-minute break in case people need to use the restroom or grab some water. And then we will meet back here at ten forty to continue with our regular agenda.
And the changes presented here seek to align our non-retail cannabis ordinances with the changes in state law. Please let me know if you have any questions about this item.
Thank you very much. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to us on this item? Seeing none here in chambers, are there any members of the public online who would like to speak to us on this item?
Yes, Chair, we do have a caller. Caller user two, your microphone is now available.
I would like more staff explanation about fines. I have a pot grower next door to me and anyway, I consider it not very pleasant. And I want to call people's attention to implications widely available use of cannabis, especially for young people. This is an article, What Happened to Our Daughter? In Wise Traditions publication, the subtitle is Terra Culture Shares Her Daughter's Tragic Tale of THC-Induced Psychosis and Suicide. This was during the lockdown and I used to think cannabis was kind of a natural thing. You know, product. It starts out, and this is the winter twenty twenty-three issue. And we discussed often with the county about suicide. Suicide is multifactorial, a vile symphony of parts that come together in a mighty clash of the finale. I will share with you this story of our daughter Mila, who in a matter of less than six months tried smoking marijuana for the first time, became addicted, developed marijuana-induced psychosis, and in May twenty twenty-one, took her own life. And part of this date, kids should air smoking laboratory creations meant to drive addiction and set off dopamine avalanches in their still developing brains. Manufacturers want our kids coming back for more. And it's anything but innocuous. I recommend this article, Wise Traditions.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
Okay, I'm wondering, is there any response to the question regarding fines that came up? I know it wasn't very clear, but I'm just wondering.
All I can say is we, we maintain our enforcement objectives for our department, for our office. We continue to work with the Sheriff's Office on illegal cannabis activities. And any complaints received are taken seriously, and we do our best to act swiftly on those complaints in, you know, one to two days at most.
Great. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair. This will not have any great impact on the revenue you anticipated?
We do not anticipate a large impact on the revenue as the diligent work of the Sheriff's Office over the past five years has really reduced the larger-sized illegal cannabis operations within the county. And the enforcement fines and the enforcement violations, those numbers have decreased year over year for the past two years. This is also likely due to the economics of the situation. And the economics are leading people away from, from cannabis operations.
Mr. Chair, I'll move the recommended actions.
Okay, motion by Supervisor.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Friend, second by Supervisor. Yep. Second by Supervisor Hernandez. And if there's no further questions or comments, we'll take a roll call vote on the item.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Brent?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
And Cummings?
Aye. That passes unanimously. And I just wanted to make a really brief announcement that item number twenty-eight, Accept and File Status Report on Cannabis Community Meetings, which was pulled from consent, will be heard as item number nine point one after the item that we are about to hear. And so just wanted to make sure that the board was aware and the community was aware as well, so that we can keep all the cannabis items together. And so the next item, item number nine, Consider Approving in Concept and Ordinance Amending Chapter seven point one three zero of the Santa Cruz County Code Regarding Retail Commercial Cannabis Businesses to Modify Enforcement Fines to Align with State Law, Confirm California Environmental Quality Act Notice of Exemption and Take Related Actions. And I'll turn it back over to Mr. Lefort.
This item is the same item that we just saw, just for our retail cannabis code versus our non-retail cannabis code alignment with AB sixteen eighty-four. Please let me know if the board has any questions.
Yep. Anybody here in the public would like to speak to us on this item? Seeing none, are there any members up with one?
Hey, everybody. Yeah, I spoke in front of City Council, about Santa Cruz City Council, about this, this issue. Because I just, I feel like a lot of people think that, you know, cannabis sales, cannabis, you know, retailer, you know, they feel like, like some kind of way to get out of poverty. And I see it as a way to get into poverty. I really don't see it as something that's positive for a community. I really don't see it as something that you can, you know, hang your hat on in terms of, you know, sustenance. It, as the, the woman mentioned in the last commentary, she mentioned that, yeah, it does, it does really have devastating effects sometimes. So I just want you to consider that in your decision-making. Thank you.
Are there any members of the public online who would like to speak to us on this item?
We do have a caller online, Chair. Caller user two, your microphone is now available.
Marilyn Garrett. So it states here, Confirm California Environmental Quality Act Notice of Exemption. I think that is improper. I think there are environmental impacts from what I've learned, including sometimes issues of pesticides, water use, et cetera. And environmentally, you know, what it's doing to our bodies, I think it's a big problem. So I'm not, I, I'm not for approving this ordinance before you on number nine. Thank you.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
All right, I'll bring it back to the board for any questions, comments or action. Move the recommended actions.
Okay.
So a motion by Supervisor Koenig, second by Supervisor McPherson. I'll ask the clerk for a roll call vote.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Brent?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
McPherson? And Cummings?
Aye. That item passes unanimously. Okay, so moving on to item number nine point one, this was originally item number twenty-eight, which was on our consent agenda, which has been pulled by Supervisor Koenig. And the item was Accept and File Status Report on Cannabis Community Meetings. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Supervisor Koenig since you pulled that.
Thank you, Chair. So this report back from the Cannabis Licensing Office was the product of our vote at a November, during an item last November, twenty twenty-three.
That I didn't support the underlying issue, which deals with all the setback changes. But I appreciate the work you did in working this out, the Coastal Commission at that language. I'll just be registering a no vote. Thank you.
Just going to say I move to accept the recommended action. As you said, is to comports with the Coastal Commission Act and the board direction. So appreciate that. And I understand Supervisor Friend's vote.
Okay, all right. Second on the motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Supervisor McPherson, second by Supervisor Koenig. Is there any further discussion on this item? Seeing none, I'll turn it to the clerk for a roll call vote.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Friend?
No.
Hernandez?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
And Cummings?
Aye.
That passes with Supervisor McPherson, Hernandez, Koenig, and Cummings voting in support and Supervisor Friend voting in opposition. It moves us to our next item. Item number eight, consider approving in concept an ordinance amending chapter seven point one two eight of the Santa Cruz County Code regarding non retail commercial cannabis businesses to modify enforcement fines to align with state law, confirm California Environmental Quality Act notice of exemption, and take related actions. And I'll turn it back over to Mr. LaForte for the presentation.
All right, this item is an update to our non retail cannabis code, specifically the fines associated with violations of code. Last year, the legislature passed AB sixteen eighty four. This bill expanded the authorization for local ordinances to impose immediate civil fines, while also capping those fines at a thousand dollars per violation and ten thousand dollars per day. This change, the changes from this bill took effect this calendar year, and the changes presented here seek to align our non retail cannabis ordinances with the changes in state law. Please let me know if you have any questions about this item.
Thank you very much. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to us on this item? Seeing none here in chambers, are there any members of the public online who would like to speak to us on this item?
Yes, Chair, we do have a caller. Caller user two, your microphone is now available.
I would like more staff explanation about fines. I have a pot grower next door to me and anyway, I consider it not very pleasant. And I want to call people's attention to implications widely available use of cannabis, especially for young people. This is an article, what happened to our daughter in Wise Traditions publication, subtitle is Terra Culture shares her daughter's tragic tale of THC-induced psychosis and suicide. This was during the lockdown and I used to think cannabis was kind of a natural thing. You know, product. It starts out, and this is the winter twenty twenty three issue. And we discussed often with the county about suicide. Suicide is multifactorial, a vile symphony of parts that come together in a mighty clash of the finale. I will share with you this story of our daughter Mila, who in a matter of less than six months tried smoking marijuana for the first time, became addicted, developed marijuana-induced psychosis, and in May twenty twenty one, took her own life. And part of this date, kids should air smoking laboratory creations meant to drive addiction and set off dopamine avalanches in their still developing brains. Manufacturers want our kids coming back for more. And it's anything but innocuous. I recommend this article, Wise Traditions.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
Okay, I'm wondering, is there any response to the question regarding fines that came up? I know it wasn't very clear, but I'm just wondering.
All I can say is we, we maintain our enforcement objectives for our department, for our office. We continue to work with the Sheriff's Office on illegal cannabis activities, and any complaints received are taken seriously, and we do our best to act swiftly on those complaints in, you know, one to two days at most.
Great, thank you very much.
This is Chair. This will not have any great impact on the revenue you anticipated?
We do not anticipate a large impact on the revenue as the diligent work of the Sheriff's Office over the past five years has really reduced the larger sized illegal cannabis operations within the county. And the enforcement fines and the enforcement violations, those numbers have decreased year over year for the past two years. This is also likely due to the economics of the situation. And the economics are leading people away from, from cannabis operations.
This is Chair, I'll move the recommended actions. Okay, motion by Supervisor.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Friend, second by Supervisor. Yep. Second by Supervisor Hernandez. And if there's no further questions or comments, we'll take a roll call vote on the item.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Friend?
All right.
Hernandez?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
And Cummings?
Aye, that passes unanimously. And I just wanted to make a really brief announcement that item number twenty eight, accepting file status report on cannabis community meetings, which was pulled from consent, will be heard as item number nine point one after the item that we are about to hear. And so just wanted to make sure that the board was aware and the community was aware as well, so that we can keep all the cannabis items together. And so the next item, item number nine, consider approving in concept and ordinance amending chapter seven point one three zero of the Santa Cruz County Code regarding retail commercial cannabis businesses to modify enforcement fines to align with state law, confirm California Environmental Quality Act notice of exemption, and take related actions. And I'll turn it back over to Mr. LaForte.
This item is the same item that we just saw, just for our retail cannabis code versus our non retail cannabis code, alignment with AB sixteen eighty four. Please let me know if the board has any questions.
Okay. Anybody here in the public would like to speak to us on this item? Seeing none, are there any members up with one?
Hey, everybody. Yeah, I spoke in front of City Council, about Santa Cruz City Council, about this, this issue. Because I just, I feel like a lot of people think that, you know, cannabis sales, cannabis, you know, retailer, you know, they feel like, like some kind of way to get out of poverty. And I see it as a way to get into poverty. I really don't see it as something that's positive for a community. I really don't see it as something that you can, you know, hang your hat on in terms of, you know, sustenance. It, as the woman mentioned in the last commentary, she mentioned that, yeah, it does, it does really have devastating effects sometimes. So I just want you to consider that in your decision making. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any members of the public online who'd like to speak to us on this item?
We do have a caller online, Chair. Caller user two, your microphone is now available.
Marilyn Garrett. So it states here, confirm California Environmental Quality Act notice of exemption. I think that is improper. I think there are environmental impacts from what I've learned, including sometimes issues of pesticides, water use, et cetera. And environmentally, you know, what it's doing to our bodies, I think it's a big problem. So I'm not, I, I'm not for approving this ordinance before you on number nine. Thank you.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
All right, I'll bring it back to the board for any questions, comments, or action. Move the recommended actions.
Okay.
So a motion by Supervisor Koenig, second by Supervisor McPherson. I'll ask the clerk for a roll call vote.
Supervisor Koenig?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
McPherson? And Cummings?
Aye, that item passes unanimously. Okay, so moving on to item number nine point one, this was originally item number twenty eight, which was on our consent agenda, which has been pulled by Supervisor Koenig. And the item was accepting file status report on cannabis community meetings. And so with that, I'll turn it over to Supervisor Koenig since you pulled that.
Thank you, Chair. So this report back from the Cannabis Licensing Office was the product of our vote at a November, during an item last November, twenty twenty three. That item was brought forward by Supervisor Hernandez and I, and looked at a number of actions that we could take to support our local cannabis industry, given all of the industry tumult and, you know, some of the consolidation that we've seen in recent years. I mean, if you want to know a history of our local industry, just look at the cannabis tax revenues that we've seen, both on cultivation and retail. I think it tells, you know, the story of some of the challenges our industry has faced. So Supervisor Hernandez and I suggested a number of potential changes. And at that time, Chair Cummings and just, you know, Supervisor Cummings had said, you know, let's, let's just suggest that we go out to do more public outreach before moving forward. So here we are, one more than six months later, we've got that information back. And so I thought that we should take a moment here to see, well, how do we want to proceed next? I would suggest that, given feedback, we should at least move forward with some of the proposals that's related to cultivation. I think that those ultimately would be, you know, barely non impactful and would be a good starting place.
All right, with that, I'm going to open it up to public. Oh, Supervisor Hernandez.
Can I make some comment?
Yeah, sure, go ahead.
So just to further extend, you know, I think that part of, part of the, the board memo that we had in the additional comment from the Chair, Justin Cummings, was these tours in our, in the different communities. And so we have the information from the tours. So I would like to see, you know, if, or I would like to find out if we're going to continue with the motion that we had done in the past, between the, the motion that we did with the board memo between me and Supervisor Koenig? Or do we need additional information to continue, you know, the board memo and the motion that we did again? So I'm, I was just, it wasn't clear about item twenty eight. So I needed some clarity, like if we still need to add some either clarity on it, or if we need to make another motion on the same item on the board memo that we did.
Yeah, yeah, Supervisor Hernandez, this is Jason Heath. Yes, the bottom line is, is, is this was staff's response to the direction given with regard to that item. If there's a, if there's a new motion that, that, that the board would contemplate based on this information or based on any other information regarding cannabis, it would be incumbent upon the board to fashion a motion and instruct staff accordingly.
Well, I think my direction would be that we continue the previous board motion between me and Supervisor Koenig.
I think, I think that would, we would need a lot more specificity than that. Staff would need a lot more specificity than that.
We have it written. We have it written up already.
I mean, I can make a suggestion now, or after public comment, whatever your preference.
Just let me ask a couple of questions, clarifying questions, I think, before we go to public comment. Maybe if you could read what you all will be proposing, so that the public is aware of the proposal prior to having public comment, then that could be helpful. So I guess my question is, just kind of thinking back to what was the direction that was provided in November, I just wanted to have a little bit of clarity. If that was just to bring back a report, or were there any, was there any direction regarding introducing potential ordinances for consideration?
Jason, I will, I will, I will look to you, but I'm going to say that I was, my understanding of what Supervisor Hernandez was suggesting was to move forward with the mo, the language of the letter from November fourteen.
That's, 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 sorry, that's, that's not, I don't think you're, you're answering Supervisor Cummings' question. Can you repeat your question?
Yeah, my question is, was when the, when direction was provided back in November, was there any direction relating to bringing back kind of draft ordinances or bringing back any?
No, there were, there wasn't, there was not.
It was just a report.
Well, I, I, actually, there was, there was, there was a motion made for, and adopted for staff to go out and do community outreach. I don't even remember whether there was a report component to it, a report back component to it. I just remember the fact that staff were instructed to go out and meet with the community and get feedback.
I'll turn back to Supervisor Koenig. It sounds like there's some language that you and Supervisor Hernandez are interested in entertaining today.
Sure, sure. So I'm looking at the November fourteenth board memo here. So I would suggest that we accept the recommended actions from the report back today and direct the Cannabis Licensing Office and other staff to suggest ordinances and submit them to the Planning Commission for Review that align the canopy limits across zone districts and license classes with their current co-location maximums, remove, remove the co-location option outlined under the Non Retail Commercial Cannabis Uses Section of County Code, allow cultivators in good standing, who have not been the subject of complaints, to apply for an additional two percent canopy bonus of the parcel size every year, and allowing CA zone parcels less than ten acres to use the entire square footage of established greenhouses for cannabis production.
Could I add, could I add a timeline for that, for early January twenty twenty five?
I mean, I was going to suggest maybe something a little bit sooner in like Q, you know, Q three, maybe so September or October of this year.
Okay, ask a quick clarifying question. Would you like the ordinance, the suggested ordinance changes to come back to this board before they go to the Planning Commission? Or would you like staff to just create ordinance changes along the lines of what you suggested, take it to the Plan Commission, and then bring it back to the board?
Sure, probably, probably best if they come back to this board first.
I also know that there was some discussion that came up in the report around, and I think Supervisor Hernandez brought up around tours and onsite consumption at some of those other locations as well. And so would that be also included in the direction?
Yes, I mean, I'm not including those in the motion at this time. I do still think that those are important things that we should consider. But wanted to try to divide the proposal a little bit here. Hopefully, we can move a little bit more expeditiously with some of the cultivation related items, which, you know, I've heard are more important to local cultivators at the moment.
Right. Supervisor McPherson, then Supervisor Friend, and then I'd like to hear from the public as well.
Clarity, and I was not surprised to see in the feedback coming that they, the industry would like to have local taxes lowered. Of course, years past, I've, something I recommended a couple of years ago for perceive more conformity and greater sales, and therefore improve revenue. But the board at that time did not support that. I am not willing, with our budget situation, to reevaluate that. Right now, I just want to make it clear that there's no change in the revenue structure. And I, just because of the action I took or suggested before, it didn't get passed. I do not want to introduce something like that at this point either.
Supervisor Friend.
First, I want to appreciate my colleague Supervisor Hernandez trying to push this off until I'm not on the board. I, I can pick up on when early January is. I think that everybody can smell what you were trying to do there. But let me just say that, that one of the concerns that I had raised in last November, and so to see half of this or three quarters of this coming back was, can you provide me with any proof that this will help? I mean, there was no other community that, that, there's nothing that's coming forward, because this is a significant change. It's being proposed again. It disproportionately impacts my district. But I don't, I mean, do you have any kind of proof that these changes cultivation are going to help? Do you have any proof that it's going to save businesses? Do you have any proof that it's going to increase revenue? Do you have any proof that it's going to benefit the community at large? I didn't see any that came out of the discussions during the listening sessions. There was nothing in the report back that showed that there was anything like this. And I think that these are major change, when we had extensive conversations about this. And this just feels like one of those, you know, slipping in on an acceptance file to make pretty significant changes to a cultivation ordinance without any proof that this is going to make any difference to either the industry or the county. And so I would like somebody somewhere to show me that it would. I mean, I mean, without offense, other than the industry, who has its own bias on this, I just want to know how have we evaluated how this is going to advantage the community vis a vis, so do you have any information on that?
First of all, what do you mean, other than the industry who has the best numbers of what the impact is? I mean, and I'm sure that we have some members of the public that would be happy to speak to that. I mean, we, so first of all, the first few items here are related to the co-location elements of our ordinance, which really basically mean that you can combine multiple permits on one property and therefore have a higher area under cultivation. What we know is that really in order to stay viable, businesses have basically, essentially multiple businesses have sort of done that, and in many ways, become the same business. And so this is really a sort of technical cleanup that simply prevents folks from carrying multiple business licenses in a way that, you know, it is just burdensome and has extra paperwork. And so this is just making our current process easier, probably reduce staff time in terms of processing and certainly wait times at the state. I mean, the other here are both items, and I totally understand the fact that you're concerned about impact on the second district. But I think that both of these suggestions here for allowing moderate increases in total canopy, one is saying that the cultivator has to be in good standing. And so we're really encouraging further cultivation on sites that we know are not problematic. And the other is really looking at utilizing greenhouse space. And we are, we do have very restrictive rules around, you know, odor control and light control within greenhouses. So again, I think the impacts of expanded greenhouse use are going to be mild.
It's not a technical cleanup. It's a significant expansion in the cultivation regs. I mean, so that we should just be honest with the community about it. Without the community being here, recognizing that that's what was going to be before us today. I mean, they were, this is an acceptance file. There was a discussion held in each district. As the report shows, there was, the community went involved in that was concerned with any expansion to cultivation being presented. So that was, was pretty clear. And, you know, it's not apples to apples when you're talking about a, a good actor at a certain square footage canopy usage and then an expansion of, of whether or not that'll create additional impacts. It's not just the actor, it's the size of what they're, of what's being grown. It's the one, it's, we've also shrunk setbacks in that time. It's now we're going to have increased canopy with reduced setbacks disproportionately impacting my district. We're not evaluating something on an even basis here. And I know where you stand on it, you know where I stand on it, but I just, I'm disappointed in the process by which this is going. This just feels like this was a six month delay to just ram through what it was that the board was going to do without the amount of community conversation that the community deserves on this, which is just, just, I mean, it's not surprising in a way. I mean, even hearing my colleague push it off till January shows what the motivation is, like, I get it. But I, I just want to say that there's been nothing shown that this is actually going to do anything to help the county's tax revenue. There's been nothing even shown that this will actually even save, because we're fit, what's happening in California and Santa Cruz County is happening throughout California, happening throughout the country, about the consolidation of companies, the decline of, of independent, in particular cannabis-related businesses, be either on the retail side or the cultivation side. And I think it would be responsible public policy to show that this change would impact any of those things. And you can't document that. So that's, that, that is not responsible public policy to do that. But I have constituents who, that live next to cultivation that can document what they believe to be impacts to them. And so an expansion of that, to me, is, should, should receive some element of, of living. So I mean, I would like to see something that shows that this is going to increase revenue. That tends to be what's said. What tends to be said is that for the last 12 years of this discussion is that the less regs will lead to more revenue, regulations. That has not been shown to be the case if we, as we have expanded size, expanded the number of outlets that can participate this and actually reduce regulations in an iterative process. The overall cannabis industry has actually declined because of external factors beyond what we're controlling. And so we're proposing to do something is to, is to lessen those regs again with no background of how this is going to actually help either the industry, the county, or, or the neighborhoods that surround it. And I think that that's the responsible thing to do, that show that you can meet those three factors before such a thing's brought forward. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. All right, why don't we do this? Why don't we see if there's any members of the public who would like to speak to us on this item? If so, please come forward to the podium. You'll have two minutes, and then we'll go to online participants to, to give them an opportunity to speak as well.
Yeah, my name is Darren. I'm in South County. I'm also one of the constituents down there that seems to have been forgotten. I strongly support the motion that's in front of the board right now. There's beyond tax revenue, there's a lot of economic activity that can be developed, such as jobs, vendor payments to all the vendors that are down there that also depend on the industry. So it's a lot more than just revenue. Stabilizing the industry, I think, goes a long way towards just agricultural principles in general. I strongly support that. I was at the listening session, and the one that had the most community outside of the industry, it was the last one. And overwhelmingly, actually, most of the members of the community, non industry people, were actually in support of our industry. And it's like that across the entire United States. Overwhelmingly, people are accepting of cannabis, and Santa Cruz is actually much higher than the national average. So I think that this goes a long way in helping to support an industry that's going to be key. And it's going to be key to this community when Zach's back in San Diego. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, Jeff Nordahl. I attended all the community meetings, and I would like to, and they were all actually very positive, except for one community on Crest Drive that was concerned. But even the folks on Crest Drive expressed interest and gratitude, and were supportive of our concept, what we're promoting is actually totally changing the cannabis as a commodity, but as a tourist experience. And we have a, a Boy Scout camp property that we're reconditioning out in Boulder Creek, where we're actually doing a botanical garden. We're educating people on the history of cannabis. And most of the comments and emails were actually tourists who were wanting to come out to Santa Cruz and learn about this plant, learn more about the medicinal value, how it's grown, the farming. And so I'd like to propose shifting away from just production, but become our wheelhouse, Santa Cruz. We're a tourist town. People want to come out and see these plants and learn about it. So I'd like to actually ask that you add to your motion to include the cannabis tourism, where people could come out and actually do onsite consumption, retail sample. And I have people, I have an Instagram profile, I have people all over the country who would want to come to Santa Cruz, put money into San Lorenzo Valley, stay at the hotels, and have a really nice tourist experience. And we want to do this responsibly. We want to shuttle bus people in and then shuttle bus them back to their lodging. And this would really help put the Santa Cruz brand as a vibrant cannabis culture on. And I think that could actually boost our revenue and our sales and our cannabis brand. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hi, thanks, thanks for being here, Supervisors. I think that there would be no immediate changes based on, say, I'm presenting a possible ordinance, a possible language. That was a lot of the concern from the community. I went to every single community outreach meeting. They just wanted more details. They didn't know what they were approving. They didn't know what they were looking at. So I think if you give him the opportunity to actually do his job, then we will get feedback from the community that is more detailed and better for both the community and the industry. At a lot of the community meetings, another problem was Crest Drive. If every single person on Crest Drive does not want there to be a cannabis facility there, let's just, let's just block off Crest Drive. You can't have cannabis cultivation on Crest Drive. That's simple. So I think there's a lot of solutions. And talking to the community more and more and getting feedback on something that Sam actually presents would be incredibly valuable. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, are there any other members of the public here in chambers who'd like to speak to us on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go and see if there's any members of the public online who'd like to speak to us on this item.
Yes, Chair, we have callers. William, your microphone is now available.
Hi, thank you. Thank you, Board, for bringing this forward. I just want to say that I strongly support the removal of the co-location, as well as the increase in canopy limits. I'm a cannabis operator in South County. We have a greenhouse. We have a greenhouse with two cultivation licenses and a nursery license. And we can't even use our existing greenhouse space because of the restrictions. And also the co-location required requires us to partner with another business, which would actually complicate tax issues and documentation issues further. And you know, we're struggling to survive at our farm in the current market industry. And I'm paying rent on square footage that I can't even use due to the restrictions. And so I just want to say that I appreciate Sam for working on this and trying to get this forward. You know, next year is might be too late. Being able to increase my canopy size this season and take advantage of space that I'm already paying rent for will increase revenue and it will help the viability of my project. It will also allow me to hire additional staff and bring more work from South County. You know, and then additionally, we're an operator in the city of Santa Cruz as well. So all of our work that gets cultivated in the county makes it to the city to get packaged and tested and then out to the state. And you know, essentially the supply chain or the ecosystem that we're working within is really dependent upon this. And so we need to be able to use the space that we're paying rent for. And we really hope that this motion can get approved and expedited in order to benefit us this season, not next season.
Caller user two, your microphone is now available.
Thank you, Zach Friend, for your comments that this does not show will increase revenue. And of course, when there are there's expansion, there will be increased impact aside due to the Aptotheus area. And this article, what happened to our daughter, the tragedy of the THC induced psychosis and suicide. The terror culture states that in fact, there's no marijuana, even in the final product of these pens and edibles and dabs and whatever else they sell. Instead, the genetically engineered plant, my question is this genetically engineered in Santa Cruz County has been highly processed. The THC extract extracted with solvents and chemically manipulated into a super concentrated offering meant to maximize impact. And then when her daughter died, she was saturated with toxins. After Mila's death, we compiled hundreds of pages of study documents and evidence and submitted it to our provincial coroner with an official request for a coroner's inter quest. Included in this package were the results of the chemical analysis. And there's a whole list here, pesticides exceeding safety values, a list of about 15. Oops, my cat is talking to me. Anyway, I, my bug is no on this. If it were required to be organic and ecologically grown like Jeff Nordahl describes. I wonder if he grows organically, that would be a different.
Thank you so much.
Sarah, your microphone is now available.
Hi, thank you. And thank you to the Board of Supervisors for listening to the community on this. I also attended all the sessions, all the listening sessions. And I, I have to say that the staff report, I think accurately described those sessions. And you know, the conclusion that came out of there was generally that there's industry support for the changes. But there was a lot of confusion within the community. I think people asked a lot of questions about why are these changes being, you know, thought about? Where's the data to support it? Just more details around why this is being, being considered. I, I know my community and we've been mentioned a few times here, Crest. And I have to admit, we do have more attention on this issue because there was a potential and there still is a potential for a cannabis operation within the center of our neighborhood. But I think it's a mischaracterization to say that that is our only concern. We are members of the Santa Cruz County community and we are concerned about changes being considered without a demonstrated data to show that it's going to increase our tax revenue while not impacting our communities. So I would ask the Board to carefully consider what's in the report and think about producing data that's going to support a beneficial change to both our tax revenues and to our communities. Thank you.
Yeah.
Pat, your microphone is now available.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for taking this issue. This is Pat Mello. I've had the pleasure of working with everybody on this for years and years and years now. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person today, but I think we're pointed in the right direction on some of this stuff. I think it's a really good idea to break off those simple cultivation updates to be able to keep our existing cultivators at least able to do a little bit more of what they would able to be able to do if they were a hemp license or a traditional ag usage. I think it's a really, really good idea also to take a deeper dive onto these, some of the onsite consumption, cultivation and you know, limited retail of sales at the, some of these sites or all of these sites. But I think it's a good idea to come back in January with this. I think there was also a lot of really good ideas that came out of the listening sessions, even though there weren't as much details coming from the county about what was planned. And there's some frustration on every end with that. I think that there is some positive things that we could look at in there. So let's get these cultivation things taken care of and then let's come back and really evaluate what we were trying to accomplish in the beginning of this. The CPP motto of keep it small, keep it local is still with us. And I think that we really need to evaluate how to get more folks as cannabis, you know, crashes and then stabilized. There's, you know, hundreds and hundreds of passionate people in this community that have been waiting on the sidelines for some sane system to participate in. And I think we need to get there. One thing that came out is that you've done is treating commercial ag like an ag use. We need to do the rest of that for the zonings with ag use in their title. So in other license types. So thank you and looking forward to hearing more about all this.
Thank you.
Junior, your microphone is now available.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, great. I'm calling in to support the onsite consumption and cannabis tourism that Jeff Nordahl was talking about. And for the reasons of increased tax revenue, local governments benefit from the sales tax and excise tax on cannabis products. These revenues can be substantial and are used to fund various public services and infrastructure projects. I know create more job creation, industry creates jobs and retail hospitality, agriculture and various ancillary services. Employment growth supports the local economy through increased spending and reduced unemployment. Boost to tourism industry could be possible. Cannabis tourism attracts visitors who spend money on accommodations, dining, transportation and local attractions. This influx of tourists contributes to overall economic vitality of the industry. There's more business opportunity. Entrepreneurs can capitalize on the growing cannabis market by opening tourist lounges, hospitality type tours, related businesses. This diversification of the local economy would foster resilience and innovation. Increased property values is another reason. Areas that become popular for cannabis tourism can can see increased demand for real estate, potentially driving up property values and generating higher property tax revenues. Economic multiplier, the money spent in the cannabis industry circulates through the local economy, benefiting various sectors and leading to a multiplier effect that enhances overall economic activity. Cannabis events and festivals hosting cannabis related events such as festivals, conferences, escpos brings additional visitors revenue showcasing Santa Cruz as a progressive and attractive destination. Thank you.
Yeah.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
All right, I'll bring it back to the Board for further discussion supervisor.
I can go with the original motion to file and accept the report, but that's as far as I want to go. And I just have concerns about the staff time it's going to take to with our other budget priorities we have. I just, I'm comfortable with the original proposal that was on the consent agenda, but that's as far as I'm going to go.
Okay, thank you very much. I would make a couple of comments since I haven't had a chance to speak on this item. First, I want to just start by thanking the staff for going out and getting the community feedback on these different types of proposals and changes. And one of the things that was struck me in the report, which highlighted is that people wanted more detailed information in terms of if we're going to make these changes, what are the changes that are going to be made? I think it's also been helpful to hear that there's, you know, some desire to get back on information on economic impacts. And you know, why are we moving forward with this? But I will say that, you know, I guess I think it would be beneficial to see some detailed language to come back to the Board. The timeframe, I feel like personally, something coming back in October is probably too, is probably short. Cause July, we're going to take off and then it only gives you about a couple of months to pull everything together, August, September. I'll ask if that's some, if, you know, doing that kind of work within this amount of time frame is something that's feasible. Maybe Sam, you can respond to that. But it sounds like getting more background information on the potential economic benefits from this. Having some concrete language that we could then, that the Board could read, see for the first time, send to the planning commission, get some feedback there. So we're providing as much community input as possible. I think that it could get us to a place where maybe we could make these necessary changes. I would say that personally, I would like to continue to include the opportunities for cannabis tourism around the onsite consumption. And so that's something that I think would be important to have included. If we're going to move in the direction of trying to have some language come back on, you know, changes to canopy sizes, change to greenhouse square footage, changes to allowing onsite consumption at retail. And and all and on the various other options too. Because I will say that I did have a retailer who did reach out and they expressed very strong concern about opening up retail sales at points at growers. And so I think that, you know, having some concrete language, being able to hear from our current dispensaries and how it will impact them. What are the financial benefits that will come forward from expanding this is something that it sounds like there's members of the community that want to see this. And also, you know, we're not making a concrete decision on that. When this comes back to us, there's going to be a lot more back and forth, but I would be supportive of seeing some ordinance language come forward that addresses some of the issues that have been brought up by Supervisor Koenig and Supervisor Hernandez. I would like to get some clarity on what that motion would, would be though. Because I'm not sure if what I heard earlier is really reflective of what happened back and was brought to us back in November. And what's the outcome of this, of the community meetings that we've had? And so maybe Supervisor Koenig or Supervisor Hernandez, if you have any comments to reflect on.
Sure, thank you, Chair. And I mean, as you pointed out, this is not, we're not making any decisions today. We're simply asking staff to spend some time, prepare what a concrete ordinance would look like, perhaps use some additional analysis, economic analysis as has been requested. And then it'll come back for a hearing by this Board, then presumably go to the planning commission, another public hearing, possibly twice. Then come back to us for a first read of any new ordinances and a second read. So I mean, we're looking at at least four more public meetings on this topic. Part of the reason we had also divided some of the actions back in November, November were to try to allow the cultivation ones to take effect for the coming growing season. And so that was, you know, again, one reason why I might want to hear at least those in September, October timeframe so that they can ultimately be implemented early in 2025 if we decide to move forward with them. But I mean, I agree that ultimately it's the total package of solutions that's going to have the greatest economic benefit. You'd ask some questions or imply some questions to staff would also direct to Mr., to Sam here. You know, what do you, what sort of timeframe do you think it'll take to prepare draft ordinances for any of these?
Based on the iterative nature that was described by the Chair, I think October is completely reasonable for staff to come back with, with a complete package. Or we could do a separate segregated package with the things that you included in your motion and then a secondary package the following month with some of the tourism types of things that the Chair mentioned. But we can, we can definitely respond in a timely fashion. And if October is the time for, and that the Board would like to see that, we can come back.
Great. I'm prepared to make, so okay. Supervisor Hernandez, let's appear from him first. You're muted.
I just wanted to make sure that when Sam responded that it was both for the separated motion and the motions together. And he did that, so that was it.
Yeah, yeah. So Supervisor Koenig.
Yeah, all right. So I'll move that we accept the recommended actions for accepting the report today. And also Cannabis Licensing Office to draft ordinances related to the, the items on the November 14th, 2023 agenda memo. So those include aligning the canopy limits across zone districts and license classes with their current co-location maximums, removing the co-location option outlined under the non-retail commercial cannabis uses section, county code SCCC 1310650. Direct allowing cultivators in good standing who have not been the subject of complaints to apply for initial 2% canopy bonus of the parcel size every year, allowing CA zone parcels less than 10 acres to use the entire square footage of established greenhouses for cannabis production. Allowing limited retail sales and consumption of cannabis goods grown by the licensee at the point of cultivation, similar to a winery. Allow current retail option operations, the option to have onsite consumption lounges. And I'd suggest, or the motion would include bringing back the cultivation related items no later than the end of October and the eyes related onsite consumption for both cultivators and retailers no later than the end of this year, 2024.
Second.
So a motion, yeah, we have a motion by Supervisor Koenig, a second by Supervisor Hernandez. I would just ask maybe as a friendly amendment that we have background information as it relates to economic impact analysis.
Yes, thank you. I meant to include that. That's a good suggestion. Yes.
All right, if there's any further questions or comments, saying none, we'll go ahead and turn it to the clerk for roll call. Your mic's on. I think your mic might be off. Supervisor Hernandez, can you hear, can you hear us?
Yeah, I can hear you now. Hi, you're taking the voter.
Yes.
You went out for a minute.
Okay. All right, passes with Cummings, Hernandez and Koenig voting in favor and Supervisor Friend and McPherson voting in opposition. And so with that, that concludes the item number 9.1 on our agenda. And we will move on to item number 10, hold public hearing to consider fiscal year 2024, 25 benefit assessment service charge reports for sanitation county service areas two, five, 10 and 20 and adopt resolution confirming the benefit assessment service charge reports. And so I'll turn this over to CDI for a presentation on this item. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? Okay, yeah, I thought my microphone was doing the same. And so, good morning. And I'm pleased to present to your Board the last step in our adoption of the 24, 25 CSA benefit assessment service charges for sanitation services, which is to hold a public hearing on the service charge reports so that they can be included on the property tax roll. So on March 12th, 2024, the Board adopted the 2024, 25 benefit assessment and service charges for the county service areas two, five for Sam Dollar, 10 and 20 and set today as the day. Five for sand dollar, 10 and 20, and set today as the date of the public hearing on the 2425 Benefit Assessment Service Charge Reports. On April 30th, the board did the same for County Service Area Five Canyon Del Sol and set today as the date of the public hearing. A summary of the approved benefit assessment and service charge reports for CSA two, five, sand dollar, 10 and 20 were increased by the Consumer to Price Index of 2.6%. And for Canyon Del Sol as CSA five, there was a 20% increase to meet revenue requirements. So by law, these must be approved by the board and forwarded to the auditor controller, treasury tax collector by August 10th, 2024 to be included on the 2425 property tax roll. So our recommended actions today are to open the public hearing and hear objections or protests, if any, to the proposed 202425 Benefit Assessment Service Charge Reports for Sanitation County Service Areas Two, Five, 10 and 20, and to close the public hearing and then adopt a resolution confirming the 2425 Service Charge Reports for the various sanitation CSAs.
Thank you very much. All right, we will open the public hearing. Are there any members of the public who like to speak to us on item number 10? Seeing on hearing chambers, are there any members of the public online who'd like to speak to us on this item?
Yes, Chair, we have a caller. Caller user two, your microphone is now available.
Marilyn Garrett, we keep having more and more and more taxes added on to our property taxes. And I am opposed to that. And I'm also thinking how outrageous we can't vote on about half our taxes going to wars and military bases and the military industrial complex. I didn't vote for genocide in Gaza or anything like that. And then we should be able to vote on that. Billions of dollars gone. And then I have a question here. When you put sanitation county service areas, please include specifically what areas, where are these locations? You do that for other items. So those are my comments. Thank you.
All right, we'll close the public hearing. I'll bring it back to the board for any action and more discussion. So any board member?
I'll move the recommended actions.
Second, so a motion by supervisor friend, second by supervisor Koenig to move the recommended actions. I'll turn it over to the clerk for roll call vote.
Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
McPherson and Cummings.
Aye. That passes unanimously. So we'll move on to item number 11, hold public hearing on the service charge report for CSA seven, zone one and two, and adopt resolution confirming sewer service charge report. I'll turn it back over to staff for the presentation on this item.
Good morning. Once again, Carolyn Burke, Assistant CDI Director. And so we will be doing the same as in item 10. We will, but this will be to adopt the sewer service charge reports and put them on the tax roll for CSA seven Boulder Creek Zones One and Two. And if you'll remember, Zone Two is our most recently formed CSA. And it is for the fallen leaf area. So on April 30th, 2024, the board approved in concept the 2425 service charges for CSA seven Boulder Creek Zones One and Two and set today as the date of the public hearing. You can see attached, there is a summary of the approved service sewer service charges. And these this charge report must be approved by the board and forwarded to the auditor controller by August 10th, 2024 to be included on this coming year's property tax roll. At the public hearing on April 30th, this were service charges were approved with Zone One increasing by an overall amount of 10%. And then Zone Two had the creation of their first rates for the to operate the Big Basin Water Company's wastewater treatment plant. So once again, we recommend that you open the public hearing and hear protests, objections and protests, if any, to the proposed 2425 Sewer Service Charge Report for CSA seven Boulder Creek Zones One and Two and adopt the resolution confirming the sewer service charges, charge report for CSA seven Zones One and Two.
Thank you very much. Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this item. Are there any members of public here in chambers that would like to speak to us on this item today? Seeing none, we'll go and see if there's any member of the public online who'd like to speak to us on this item.
Yes, Chair, we have a caller. Caller user two, your microphone is now available.
Marilyn Garrett, again, I want to voice my opposition. And the money the county does have, I believe, is being misspent often for so-called services like cell towers, antennas, 4G, 5G, deadly, deadly microwave radiation. I often see in the agendas where funds have been reallocated from one area to another area without additionally taxing the public. And what I would like to see that done for all this wireless debt technology for the birds and bees shifted to what would really, I would say, benefit the public, not harm them. Those are my comments.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
All right, we'll close the public hearing. I'll bring it back to the board for action or discussion on this item.
Yeah, Chair, I just have to to comment on, but first of all, welcome back Carolyn Burke. Nice to have you back here. And this is another opportunity to recognize the great deal of work that's gone with our Public Works team. And with to bring Big Basin Water Wastewater Treatment Plan into county management partnership with the state and court appointed receiver. The work required really a great deal of time and effort from multiple agencies. It's well worth the effort because it has kept families in their homes. And I, it should be noted that the people there voted for support of this measure. So I would make move the recommended actions.
Thank you. A motion by supervisor McPherson, second by supervisor Hernandez. And I'll turn it to the clerk for a roll call vote on this item.
Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
McPherson.
Aye.
And Cummings.
Aye. Set and passes unanimously. To move this to item number 12, hold continued public hearing to consider certification of the vote results for the county service area 46 Pinecrest and adopt resolution authorizing and levying assessment for road maintenance operations and projects. And I will welcome staff from CDI.
Good afternoon, board. Oh, wait, it's still morning. Good morning, Chair. Good morning, board. Christine Hicks with Public Works. The item before you is the county service area number 46, rest benefit assessment election to decrease their assessment for fiscal year 202425. A little background was that in 2017, they had storm damage for which they raised their benefit assessments. And now that those repairs are complete, they want to return their benefit assessment to its previous $10,792. $1,792. Previous board proceedings approved the engineer's report, release the ballots to be mailed and open the public hearing and set today to continue that public hearing with the relaying of the results of that election. The election results are of the 31 ballots sent out to affected parcel owners, 15 were returned unanimously voting yes for the decreased rate. The recommended actions for the board today are to accept the certification of the vote, direct the retention of the ballots and adopt the resolution authorizing and levying the assessment for the road maintenance operations and projects for CSA number 46 Pinecrest for the 2425 fiscal year.
All right, thank you very much. We'll go ahead and we will open the public hearing. So is there any member of the public here in chambers that would like to speak to us on this item? Seeing none, we'll go online to see if there's any member of the public online who'd like to speak to us on this item.
We do have a speaker, Chair. Caller user two, your microphone's now available.
Marilyn Garrett, that's, I think, the first time that I have heard decreasing the rates because of certain conditions that have changed. Gee, I think that ought to take place more often. That's my comment. Thank you.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
All right, we'll bring it back to the board, see if there's a board member who'd like to move item 12.
Move the recommended actions in District Five, and it's really nice to have Ms. Garrett on our side on this.
Second.
All right, so we have a motion by supervisor McPherson, second by supervisor Hernandez to approve the staff recommendation for item 12. And with that, we'll take a roll call vote.
Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
McPherson.
Aye.
And Cummings.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Okay, we'll keep cruising. Item number 13, hold continued public hearing to consider certification of the vote results for County Service Area 51 Hopkins Gulch Road and adopt resolution authorizing and levying assessment for road maintenance operations and projects. And so turn it back over.
Thank you. The brief background for this CSA is that they experienced road damages during the December 22 and January 23 storms. And this election is to increase their assessment, to collect funds, to begin the repairs. These funds will be used mostly for the geotech and design engineering costs while the scope of work and construction costs are developed between the CSA, our county staff and FEMA. Previous board meetings authorized the release of the ballots and opened the public hearing and set the public hearing today for the results of those elections. Of the 38 ballots sent out to affected parcel owners, 25 were returned with 17 votes in favor of increasing the assessment and eight votes not in favor. These weighted results resulted in 69% yes and 31% no. The past election will provide about $180,000 in increased revenue for 2425. This is a single year, the effect of this election is for the single year of 2425. The recommended actions for the board today are to accept the certification of the votes, direct the retention of the ballots and adopt the resolution authorizing and levying the assessment for County Service Area Number 51 Hopkins Gulch Road for 2425.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to us on this item who is here in chambers? Seeing none, we'll go online and see if there's any member of the public who'd like to speak to us on this item.
Yes, Chair, we have a caller. Caller user two, your microphone is now available.
Again, I oppose all these increases. And I wonder if any board member has checked out geoengineeringwatch.org, Dane Wiggins' website about the catastrophic weather event taking place being very much integral to patents that Raytheon and Lockheed Martin have told to the weather and cause these disasters that we're facing all over the earth. Most recent episode that he reported on was basketball-sized hail, ice-nucleated hail causing craters like on agricultural land. This we need to, it's imperative that these operations stop. And that elected officials especially advocate for the halt of the damage caused by weather intervention, weather warfare. Check out geoengineeringwatch.org. It's very factual. Thank you.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
All right, close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the board for action on this item.
Like to move the recommended action, this is in the fifth district also.
motion by supervisor, okay, second by supervisor friend, and I'll turn it to the clerk for a roll call vote.
Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
McPherson. And Cummings.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Okay, so we'll continue moving on. Item number 14, as the Board of Directors of the Davenport County Sanitation District, hold public hearing to consider 202425 Davenport County Sanitation District Water and Sewer Service Charge Reports and adopt resolution confirming the water and sewer service charge reports. I'll turn it back over to Ms. Burke.
Thank you very much. Once again, Carolyn Burke, Assistant CDI Director. Similar to the previous items we brought forth for the CSA sewer charge reports, this is for the Davenport County Sanitation District. On May 14th, 2024, the board approved in concept the 2425 water and sewer service charges for the Davenport County Sanitation District and set today as the date of the public hearing for the service charge reports. You have in your packet a summary of the approved water and sewer service charges for Davenport County Sanitation District. The water service charges are increasing by an overall amount of 9.6%. And the sewer service charges are decreasing by an overall amount of 14%. As required by law, the charge reports must be approved by the board, forwarded to the auditor controller by August 10th, 2024. Therefore, we recommend that your board open the public hearing and hear objections or protests, if any, to the proposed fiscal year 2425 water and sewer service charge reports for the Davenport County Sanitation District, close the public public hearing and adopt resolution confirming the 2425 water and sewer service charge reports for the Davenport County Sanitation District.
All right, thank you very much. That will open the public hearing. Is there any member of the public who'd like to speak to us on this item who's here in chambers? Seeing none, we'll go and see if there's any members of the public online who'd like to speak to us on this item.
We have no callers online, Chair.
Okay, we'll bring it back to the board for action on this item.
Don't move.
Second.
Okay, so a motion by supervisor Hernandez to move the staff recommendation, second by supervisor friend, turn it to the clerk for a roll call vote.
Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
McPherson.
Aye.
And Cummings.
Aye. That passes unanimously. Okay, so next item on our agenda, as the Board of Directors of the Freedom County Sanitation District, hold public hearing to consider 202425 Freedom County Sanitation District Sewer Service Charge Report and adopt resolution confirming sewer service charge report. And I'll turn it back over to Ms. Burke.
Thank you very much. On May 14th, your board approved in concept the 2425 service charges for Freedom County Sanitation District and set today as the date of the public hearing for the sewer service charge report. The sewer service charges are increasing by an overall amount of 8.4%. As required by law, the sewer service charge report must be approved by the board and forwarded to the auditor controller by August 10th to be included on the 2425 property tax roll. Therefore, we recommend your board open the public hearing and hear objections or protests, if any, to the proposed fiscal year 2425 sewer service charge report for the Freedom County Sanitation District, close the public hearing and adopt a resolution confirming the 2425 sewer service charge report for the Freedom County Sanitation District.
Thank you very much. With that, we'll open public hearing. Are there any members of the public who would like to speak to us on this item? Seeing on hearing chambers, are there any members of the public online who'd like to speak to us on this item?
Yes, Chair, we have a caller. Caller user two, your microphone is now available.
Why are there so many of these on the agenda? Almost the same, all increase in taxes. And then items that are on the consent agenda, 76 items, I think today, that should merit public comments. Can you explain why there are so many? Is it because the county is in debt for various reasons, including all the money spent on the pandemic, COVID shots, et cetera? Why are so many on this agenda today?
Ms. Garrett, the item before us is a public hearing related to Freedom County Sanitation District. And so we're unable to answer that question at this time, and your comment should be directed towards this item, please.
I vote no.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
Okay, that will bring it back to the board for action on this item. Let's see if there's a board member who'd like to make a motion.
I'll move the recommended actions. Second.
Okay, so a motion by supervisor Koenig, second by supervisor McPherson to move the recommended actions. I'll turn it to the clerk for a roll call vote on this item.
Supervisor Koenig.
Aye.
Brent.
Aye.
Hernandez.
Aye.
McPherson.
Aye.
And Cummings.
Aye. That item passes unanimously, which brings us to. Aye. That item passes unanimously, which brings us to item number 16. Hold public hearing to consider resolution confirming proposed fiscal year 202425 assessment service charge reports for County Service Area 12 Wastewater Management. And so I'll turn it over to Mr. Schrader for that presentation.
Excuse me. Good morning, Chair Cummings, members of the board, CEO Palacios. Health Services Agency requests that the board hold public hearings and adopt resolution confirming the proposed fiscal year 2425 assessment service charge reports for the County Service Area 12 Wastewater Management. On April 30th, 2024, the board adopted resolutions confirming the establishment benefit assessments and service charges for CSA 12 fiscal year 2425 and set today as the date for the public hearing. To complete the fiscal year 2425 benefit assessment service charge proceedings is necessary for the board to open the public hearing, take testimony, and consider objections and protests to the reports, close the public hearing, and consider adoption of the resolution confirming the benefit assessment service charge reports. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, with that, we'll open up the public hearing to see if there's any members of the public who would like to speak to us on this item. Seeing none here in chambers, is there any member of the public who would like to speak to us online?
Yes, Chair, we have a caller. Caller user two, your microphone is now available.
I'd like to know where the location is of Service Area 12, please, and future agendas include that. And when I think of wastewater management, I think of the SoCal Creek Water District calling Puff Water Pure Water, where they're taking waste sewage from Santa Cruz City, injecting this into the aquifer in a supposed effort to shave off saltwater intrusion. This is very dangerous and contaminating of the water in various ways. Where is this area? What do you mean specifically by wastewater management? Could you clarify for me and the public what does that entail specifically? Thank you.
Further speakers, Chair.
Okay, we'll close public hearing, and maybe if you could just speak to where the location of County Service Area 12.
Yeah, sure. Senator? Yeah, so County Service Area 12 affects all areas of the county that are not served by a public sewer system. Uh, 12A affects the Santa Cruz Valley more specifically, and 12N affects just certain parcels, either with enhanced or alternative septic systems or non-conforming septic systems.
Thank you so much. Okay, um, if there's no further questions or comments from the board, I'll see if we can entertain a motion on this item.
Move the recommended actions.
Second.
So a motion by Supervisor Friend, second by Supervisor McPherson, and I'll turn it to the clerk for a roll call vote.
Supervisor Conick?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
And Cummings?
Aye. That item passes unanimously. It brings us to item number 17. Consider approving in concept an ordinance amending subdivision A of section 2.02.060 of the Santa Cruz County Code relating to the compensation of the Board of Supervisors. Schedule the ordinance for final adoption on June 25th, 2024, and take related actions. And I'll turn it over to our HR Director, Gina Patel.
Good morning, Chair Cummings and members of the board. Pursuant to county code, we review the compensation of Board of Supervisors each June. Staff has done that review, and we are recommending to increase the salary structure by 3.16%. This adjustment would maintain 62% of Board of Supervisor's salary as compared to the salary of a Superior Court judge. So this is required by ordinance because your salaries are tied to Superior Court judges. So we're recommending that you maintain that, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And with your approval, we would put the item on consent agenda for June 25th, and then the increase would take effect August 25th, which is the 61st day after passage. So I'll stop there and answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Thank you for that presentation. I'll open it up for members of the public. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak to us on this item? Seeing none here in chambers, we'll take it online to see if there's any member of the public online who would like to speak to us on this item.
Yes, Chair, we have a caller. Caller user two, your microphone is now available.
At this time, where the budget is in terrible straits, I don't think a salary increase is appropriate. And I'd also like to ask, what are you talking about specifically in terms of finances? You gave percentage. So could you please say the current salary that supervisors get, state the amount, and what the increase would be to? And I'd like to also know what the county administrative officer receives. I think it's the highest of any county employee. Please answer my questions. Thank you.
We have no further speakers, Chair.
All right, we'll bring it back, see if maybe we can answer the question. I have a general report in front of me as it relates to the board supervisors. Our salaries, as it's indicated in the report, are currently at $143,328 annually, and the adjustment would be to $147,857 annually. And it's a 3.16% increase. And so I don't know if you can answer our other question.
That is correct, and I think the other question is really about the percentages that I mentioned. Our county code has a provision that ties Board of Supervisor's salary to Superior Court judges. At the time that we made that change to county code and tie your salaries to the judges, the salary of the supervisors were at 62% of a Superior Court judge. The supervisors at the time all wanted to maintain that. There was no great, there was no mission or goal to get to 100% of a Superior Court judge. So that 62% is just the standard that you've set, that that's where your salary would be compared to judges. I believe that's what Ms. Garrett's talking about.
Thank you very much. All right, any comments, questions from board members? Seeing none, Supervisor Conick?
Sure. Thanks, Chair. Yeah, I mean, I certainly recognize, you know, the sentiments being a difficult budget year and, you know, the optics of, you know, proving a praise for ourselves here. I mean, of course, as we said, we do have this overarching policy of trying to tie 62% to judges. So there's that. I mean, of course, I think if I, you know, if I propose that we didn't take this increase, my wife'd probably kill me. You know, it's hard enough making ends meet. I've got to find a way to pay for childcare, like everyone who lives in this community. And, you know, we're also subject to the extremely high housing costs. I think ultimately, though, that, you know, it has occurred to me before, maybe we, I mean, I'm not proposing it here, but that it is important that the position of supervisor is comparably compensated to other positions, I mean, including, you know, other, other areas of business in our community, because ultimately, we want these to be competitive. We want a lot of people to come out and run for these seats, and that's just not going to happen if we don't offer, you know, a decent compensation to encourage people to do that. I mean, I know of a number of people that, that ended up not running in this current cycle just because, you know, they make well more in their current professions doing something else. So we don't, we don't want it to be a hindrance for people to step forward into public service. So for those reasons, I'm going to support the motion today, or the recommended actions. I'll, I'll move the recommended actions.
Okay. The motion by Supervisor Conick?
I'll second it.
Okay. Second by Supervisor Friend. Seeing no further questions or comments, I'll turn it over to the clerk for a roll call vote.
Supervisor Conick?
Aye.
Friend?
Aye.
Hernandez?
Aye.
McPherson?
Aye.
And Cummings?
Aye. That passes unanimously. Okay. I believe that brings us to our next item, item number 18, which is going to be our closed session. So we will close the regular meeting. We'll go into closed session, and then we have a time certain item at 1:30 to discuss the final budget. And so with that, we will adjourn our regular meeting and move into closed session.
And there's nothing reportable today.
Oh, yeah, there's nothing reportable out of closed session. Thank you so much.